All right, good evening, everyone. City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Suffert here. Alderman Revel.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
Excellent, all right. Well, good evening, everybody. We have the entire Evanston City Council here for our meeting today, Monday, November 20th, Thanksgiving week, so happy Thanksgiving, early Thanksgiving for everyone. I think we all have a lot to be grateful for despite the challenges that we have here in our fine community. I hope we're all really grateful for the wonderful place that we live, and so I know I feel that way. I also appreciate the folks that are here tonight because, you know, this frankly could be the most consequential meeting that we have when we talk about our city budget. Our city budget reflects our values and our priorities as a community, and so I appreciate everybody coming out and everybody that's watching at home as we discuss our 2018 budget. We have a lot of tough decisions to make, and I think we'll have a good rigorous discussion tonight and walk out of here with a plan. So with that, I turn it over to the city manager if you have any public announcements.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We are approaching the holiday season, as the mayor had said, and a big part of that is shopping in Evanston and investing in the businesses that support our community. Kathryn Gottsick from the Main Dempster Mile and Annie Cokely, the executive director of downtown Evanston, are here to talk a little bit about the events that they have planned both separately and together.
We're going to start the presentation with a video about shopping small in downtown Evanston. We love Evanston, and we know you do, too. Now prove it. Join Evanstonians on Saturday, November 25th, to shop small. Small Business Saturday is a nationwide event celebrating locally and independent-owned businesses. As November is a month for giving back, help us give back on Small Business Saturday. When you support local businesses, you support the entire community. On Small Business Saturday, bring friends and family members downtown to check out special offerings and events, enjoy a free cookie on our cookie crawl, and participate in a fun shopping passport program with exciting giveaways. One of our favorite things about Evanston is the great civic pride and extremely strong sense of community, so let us remind you why it's important to shop local. Local shopping helps keep our community unique, local merchants support nonprofit organizations, supporting your local economy supports your neighbor, small businesses hire from within the community, and brick-and-mortar stores pay taxes that provide services to our community. With the variety of stores we have downtown, you can easily knock off your entire list in one afternoon. Downtown Evanston is the place to be this holiday season. So come out and shop local on Saturday, November 25th, for Small Business Saturday and throughout the entire holiday season. More details at downtownevanston.org. So I don't think I have to tell you how important it is to shop local, but it is an important message for everyone to understand all those things mentioned in that video, so we really do encourage everyone to support the community and shop in downtown Evanston throughout the holidays. And tonight I will go over some events that we have to bring people downtown, oh, and some advertising. So we have some ad buys. Evanston Now, we have ads there, Shop Evanston Magazine, which just came back, as I understand. We purchased an ad there. The Evanston Sufi York Nestra Holiday Program Guide, Evanston Roundtable, the newsletter and banner ads on the Chicago North Shore Convention and Visitor Bureau's website. We've also purchased 18 15-second WBEZ ads, and we will have two-week ads on Vokalo, as well as paid Facebook posts. So as you just saw, we're kicking off a new campaign, and it starts on Saturday. "We Love Evanston" is the hashtag that we'll be using, but the creative has downtown Evanston in the image. We kicked it off with that video. We encourage people to come downtown and take photos in these categories. There will be more press releases will be going out, but best dish, best storefront, best public art, best of. And then we will unveil a winner of these contest categories in February. So we continue, everyone, to continue that use of "We Love Evanston" hashtag, which became popular, as many of you may remember, through the World Wildlife Foundation We Love Cities contest, of which we came second from Paris, France, so we're bringing it back. These are sort of the examples that we'd like to see, some fun photos of people taking pictures in their favorite places and using the hashtag. Small Business Saturday, this Saturday, we are kicking it off with brunch at Boltwood from 10:00 to 2:00. There will be a 10% discount and $5 mimosas to energize you to shop all day. We'll have a cookie crawl at our 21 downtown Evanston locations. Our passport program, this is exciting, is brand-new to us. We normally put our resources towards a trolley, but we didn't see a lot of people on the trolley last year, so we're refocusing, putting those resources to actually what you just received. So the "We Love Evanston" tote bag, a coffee mug, and a pop socket. This is new to me, but they're very popular. There's one in your bag. All with the "We Love Evanston" logo, and proof of $75, those will be provided to anyone that can prove it with their passport, and an entry to win dinner downtown. Warm Bevy Walk, very popular. We started this three years ago, and now we partner with the Mile. This is Thursday, December 7th. We have like 600 people signed up for this event. It's to encourage local shopping. Our downtown location is at Vinic to check in. We have 20 participating businesses downtown, and that mug, again, will be available if we have any left for $5, and our donations will go to the YWC, and last year we gave them a check for $800. We'll also, again, continue with the window decorating contest. This is citywide. There's not a theme this year, but so far we have 30 businesses participated. It's just a fun thing to go out and check out all these windows. People put a lot of time into them, and they look great. The CTA Holiday Train is scheduled for December 13th and December 15th, and we're going to be doing some fun giveaway events for those as well. The tree lighting, we have a location change, as you might have guessed, so without the tree at Fountain Square, we will be at 909 Davis. Simply, that is the plaza in between or adjacent to Chef Station at the intersection of Church and Maple. That begins at 5:00 with the Evanston Children's Choir, and then in between that hecky will get the crowd excited. At 5:30, the mayor lights his first official tree, although it won't be the official tree forever. It's a temporary tree this year, but that's okay. And then Evanston owns it, will close out the ceremonies, and then at 6:00, we have a sing-along with some old-timey carolers, kicking it off with Rudolph, which was written here, Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer, and we have free little red noses to hand out. Santa will be at the Marion, and Mrs. Claus will be at the Hilton Garden Inn with hot chocolate. That's all I have. I'm going to turn over to Kathryn.
Hi, and thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about what we've got going on in the Main Dempster Mile. If you can pop right to that second, please. Oh, hi. All right. First of all, many of you have actually already posted on Facebook that you've seen our candy cane lights. Because so many trees were removed and replanted this year, we were unable to light the trees again, but this was our alternative, and we're getting a lot of positive feedback on it. We are very, very focused on Small Business Saturday. 260 some businesses pay taxes in the Main Dempster Mile, and over 200 of them are independently-owned. We have over 80 independently-owned storefronts. If you want to shop small, it's a great place to shop small. We are participating in the cookie crawl. I don't have a final count now, but I'm up over 30 right now. Hune will be giving away free cheese puffs in the morning while supplies last. Then Chicago Main Newsstand is having organ music in the middle of the afternoon. Pictures with Santa at Follow Your Nose. There's a popcorn bar at Guitar Works, and a Monisir Taco Shop is having their grand opening that day, so they'll have free coffee and free tacos with Perchos throughout the day. Hip Circle is also holding their annual holiday hike, taking a group of people on a tour of shops, and Soapy is just wants to get in on the act, and so they're teaching people to sew on a button. On December 9th, we have a family-focused event. We're having your picture taken with the elf on the shelf at Threads and Follow Your Nose. We are participating in the Warm Bevy Walk. That's not a final list. We're actually all messed up over 30 with that as well. Our check-ins are Sketchbook Brewery and our newest business right now, while excluding a Monisir Tacos, MBG Products Coffee Wholesaler, and they'll also be a check-in. We are mostly, we're spending most of our time leveraging in-store events, so you'll see just a couple of them that are particularly holiday-oriented. Follow Your Nose pictures with Santa, Four Finch's dozen amazing trims and tidings classes. There's a holiday sing-along at Yo Fresh. Guitar Works has an annual concert and food drive, and then we have two ribbon-cutting ceremonies that'll be happening over the holidays as well. We do almost all of our advertising on social media, so if you'd like to learn more about any of these things, you can go to the Main Dempster Mile's Facebook page or Instagram page. Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you have to pay to park in downtown Evanston during the holidays?
Why, no.
Not in the garages, and not after 5:00 PM.
Thank you, City of Evanston.
From Thursday, December 23rd, November 23rd, right? Thanksgiving, yeah, until after the holidays.
Until January 23rd, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to be sure. That concludes my reports, Mr. Mayor.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Bobquist. City Clerk, any communications?
Not today.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to move to public comment next on the agenda. Today, we had 10 people sign up for public comment. Was there anyone else out there? If you're not on this list but wanted to be, just let the city staff know. So we've got 10 people, so our rules are we allot 45 minutes total for public comment and no more than three minutes per person, because we have 10 people. That would be 30 minutes. Does not mean you need to use up the whole 30 minutes. If you can get your point across and less, you're welcome to do that. We would appreciate that. We will cheer. And, you know, I just ask everyone to please be respectful and professional and civil up during civil comment, during public comment tonight. So with that, we will go through the list, and I apologize upfront if I mispronounce anyone's name. So Jackie April will be first, then Matt Patton, and then Nolan Robinson.
Hello, how are you? I have a couple of topics I'm going to talk about, but I'm going to make it really quick because I've got 50,000 things going on in my mind. Number one, being here tonight, waiting for the meeting to start, one of the cleaning people was spraying, and I have a sensitivity to sprays to the point where I've actually been rushed to the hospital. So I've asked twice if he could not spray, and he was just cleaning the bucket. I just ask that you guys take that seriously when people say it, because you did have a police officer in the city of Chicago have a cleaning person spray in the middle of a roll call and died. That's number one. Number two, boy, that's a bad way to start out. Number two, if you guys could stipulate in your monies that you give to connections for the homeless, that they have a certain amount of money that's put aside for people that don't fall under the criteria of mental incapacities or physical incapacities. There are hundreds of thousands of people who lost their jobs, families who are homeless, and if you don't have children, if you're not elderly or whatever, you fall through the cracks. And I happen to be one of those people who fall through the cracks, and it's not fun, I can tell you. Number three, the Albion Project. I'm very sad to see the keg go.
Just for the record, you mean Tommy Nevins. I am not the mayor that got rid of the keg.
I mean, you know, I mean Tommy Nevins. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry to see Tommy Nevins go. For the last, I don't know, several years, we've had all-class parties, ETHS all-class parties at Tommy Nevins, and that means whatever class you graduated from, you're welcome to come. And that was scheduled for December 26th, but it had to be canceled because of this. Well, not because of this, but because Tommy Nevins isn't going to be there. So it's been rescheduled to this coming Friday, so if anybody can make it there at 9:00, say hello and goodbye to your classmates, and have a great time, and wish, you know, Tommy Nevins and everybody a good farewell, because, you know, they will be missed. And that is all I can think of right now. Thank you, council members. I know what you do is super, super hard. I want to thank those people that reached out to me and are trying to help me. It's greatly appreciated. I know your schedules are overloaded, but thank you. That's it. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jackie. Next is Matt Patton and Nolan Robinson, then Sherri Kushner.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you so much for the time tonight to speak on Lyft. Realizing that every decision that the city makes is an important one and definitely not an easy one, certainly appreciate the opportunity to explain our position on the proposed tax. My name is Matt Patton. I'm the Midwest Public Policy Manager for Lyft. At Lyft, it's our mission to improve people's lives with the world's best transportation service. We believe that by helping people travel from one place to another more conveniently, we can make their lives easier and give them time to do what matters most, spending more time with their family, their friends, at work, or at school. Lyft is more than just a safe ride to work, home, or doctor appointment. It's a service that allows people to be their own boss, gives them flexibility in their schedule, and the opportunity to earn supplemental income. Driving with our company provides people from all over the Chicagoland area with flexible earning opportunities, puts over $68 million back in Chicago's economy, and gives individuals from underserved communities the ability to connect with parts of the city and suburbs they might otherwise not be able to visit. However, taxes like the one we're discussing tonight can make people change their minds about where they go and how they get there. While 20 cents might seem minimal the sum, for someone in an underserved community who uses ride-sharing to get to work, it can mean one less meal per paycheck. Could also cause people to limit the amount of times they use for ride-sharing services, possibly limiting their options for groceries, employment, or how often they go downtown Evanston. In Cook County, residents from every corner seem to be exhausted with taxes these days, from property taxes to the increase in the recent pop tax. People from all over have expressed their opposition to these changes. Ride-sharing services are clearly filling a major gap in our transit system, providing residents with a first and last mile option that hasn't previously existed. For example, in Chicago, 63% of drop-offs and pickups take place in underserved neighborhoods, while 25% of Lyft rides in Chicago start or end near a transit station. We value our relationship with all the communities we operate in, especially Evanston. We want to make sure that we have a platform that works for everyone, which is why we're here to urge the city council to support ride-sharing and reject this unnecessary tax. Thanks so much for your time. I'm happy to address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Matt.
You bet. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Next up is Nolan Robinson, then Sherri Kushner, then Kelly Rooney.
Good evening. Our City Evanston Board, my name is Nolan Robinson. I've been living in Evanston for 17 years, and I've been driving for Lyft for over a year. When I lost my job working in restaurant management, I signed up to drive with Lyft, and this has been my lifeline ever since. Increasing taxes on ride-sharing would make it more expensive for riders to use the service and less riders' means, sorry, less money for drivers like myself who are working hard to make ends meet. As a father-four, ride-sharing has enabled me to take control of my life by giving me a steady source of income and flexible schedule. I have twins in college, Nolan and Ora, and I've been using the money I make driving for Lyft to pay that tuition. My responsibility as a father is my number-one priority, and having the flexibility to spend time with my family whenever they need me while being able to earn is invaluable. Excuse me. Ride-sharing has benefited the community of Evanston enormously. It not only allows countless drivers to keep their families afloat, it also ensures that riders can commute more efficiently and have access to rides, safety rides, 24 hours a day. Keeping ride-sharing affordable for people from all backgrounds and neighborhoods is crucial. As a Lyft driver, every passenger I have means more money to support myself and my family. Therefore, I urge Evanston legislators to think about people like me when they're voting to propose the hike. A little nervous, so thanks. All right. Sorry, man.
Thank you. No, thank you. Thank you very much, Nolan. It was nice to see you and again. Congratulations for Saturday night, and your son winning the NAACP Award.
Oh, yeah. You were there.
That was great.
As an honor.
That was great. Next up, we've got Sherri Kushner, then Kelly Rooney, then Ben Shapiro.
Hi, thanks so much, Mayor and Alderman. I'm Sherri Kushner, and I teach media arts at Shute Middle School, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the wonderful collaborations that we've had with the Evanston Public Library and how excited we are about their proposed renovations. I would say about six years ago, the Teen Loft got a 3D printer, and it was kind of the first one in education space, and in working with Renee and her staff, that was our first real opportunity to bring students to our space to use it, and also to do training in the summer so that we were able to bring students through a pilot program and then eventually purchase one at the school for them. Since then, I will say, we've partnered to bring a lot more programming to students in District 65 schools every summer through partnerships with them. They've trained us on a lot of things that have come out. If you've heard about the Arduino, working with coding, problem-solving, programming, and I teach media arts, so graphic design, working more with 3D space, and certainly we would expect, of course, the library provides a lot of books, but they've also provided technology that we can borrow in the schools. So if you've seen small circuits called Makey-Makeys, that the kids are able to connect to conductive materials and play instruments, we've been able to check out kits from the Teen Loft so that students are able to bring that back to the schools and do it in non-traditional spaces, again, for the last few years. We've also had a lot of collaboration with them to display student work, and I know that we're looking to expand some of those spaces with their proposed renovations, and so that's an opportunity for students to come out into the community and really see their work in a larger space. And I will also say that something that we're looking as we move forward, especially at Shute, we're about to have a larger maker space beyond my classroom, and parents are always coming in at conferences saying, "How can we get access to this amazing equipment in the community, like 3D printing, laser cutting, learning design?" And certainly, these proposed renovations would answer that question, providing an equitable space that's free and available to all to really get access to technology that they could use in their everyday lives. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Kelly Rooney, then Ben Shapiro, then Wendell Thomas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Kelly Rooney. I'm the Evanston Skokie School District 65 math coach. I'm just here to share some experiences working with the public library. Two years ago, I had the pleasure to work with Renee Newmeyer. She's the young adult services supervisor, and we partnered to offer a program to Project Excite. We did a game design course, which allowed students to create video games through Scratch and to 3D print objects and make board games to their own imagination. This past summer, we worked together to have an electronics, robotics, and designs camp for a large portion of Shute students. So as you can see, the programming that the Teen Loft offers is innovative and cutting-edge, so I think it would be a great boon to the young learners of Evanston to have a space that matches the programming that they offer to the students of Evanston. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kelly. Ben Shapiro, then Wendell Thomas, then Doreen Price.
Good evening. I'm Ben Shapiro, 1127 Dewey. Old habit to do it that way. Mr. Mayor, city council, city manager, city clerk Reed, good evening. It's a pleasure to see you all again. Two previous speakers covered many of the points I wanted to make, so I will keep it very brief, and I want to say thank you. This town is blessed with a wonderful library, in no small part because of our ongoing relationship with the city, city employees, Alderman, the mayor's office, and certainly the city manager's office. We do the job we do because you guys have helped us do that, and I wanted to thank you for that support. Now, any of you who've had to sit through my elevator speech, or heaven forbid, Karens, know that libraries have faced a lot of challenges in the last few years, and we are continuing to meet those challenges. As you can see in today's Daily Northwestern, there was a nice article about our social worker. Social work is one of the ways that libraries have changed over the last 20 years, but there are many others. Maker Spaces, outreach to the school districts, all of those things. We currently inhabit, thanks to the city, a building that is, and this is meant as a positive, I'm not trying to be negative here at all, a building that is now in the middle of its third decade, and these renovations that we propose in our capital improvement program will allow us to adjust the building to meet the changing needs of this population, to help it grow economically, to constantly focus on, I think, one of the core, the core value of Evanston, which is education. And so I hope that you will continue to support us as you have in the past, and that you will look very favorably at our CIP requests as part of the budget. Thank you again. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Ben, and thank you for your service to the library. Wendell Thomas, Doreen Price, and then Kelly Elwood.
I made a mistake. I thought we had five minutes. I will race as best I can. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, sirs, madams, and our esteemed city manager. My name is Wendell A. Thomas. I've been an Evanston resident for more than 70 years. I am looking for help. I hired a man who lived next door to me as my patent attorney for a patent I was seeking and for a lawsuit I wanted to file. He moved one block away six months ago and still lives in Evanston. While he was my attorney, he violated many of the rules of the Attorney Registration and Disciplinary Commission, and I complained. He was subsequently suspended from the practice of law for 60 days. He acknowledged his guilt on all charges that the ARDC made against him and signed an affidavit witnessed by his lawyer. These acknowledgements included his statements of meeting ex parte with a Cook County judge in the judge's chambers, who turned out to be an imposter. His acknowledgement also included his claims that the clerk of the Cook County Circuit Court had scammed him by giving him a bogus docket number for a lawsuit he was to have filed on my behalf, that, of course, he never filed. His affidavit also acknowledged that he had perjured himself to the ARDC. In the months that followed, I realized he had done a number of things to me that were criminal, and I went to the Evanston Police Department and requested that they charge him for these crimes. What I did not know at the time I presented the information to Evanston Police was that they were considering me a suspect because of four false police reports that this suspended lawyer had filed against me six months previously. He stipulated in each false police report that the police were, quote, "Not to talk to Thomas about this report." Three of the false police reports claimed that I had damaged his vehicles. The fourth claimed I had turned the valves on his propane gas grill with the idea of burning his house down. The police respected his request for silence and never spoke to me. I learned about these claims when I heard a loud knock on my door and was subpoenaed to court because he was seeking a stalking no-contact order against me. In the court hearing, the police reports and the subpoena I was served with, I was accused of the following and more: loosening the lug nuts of the front wheel of his wife's car in order to cause a fatal accident for her and their children; stalking his children daily; hiding in his yard at night to approach his five-year-old son; luring his pre-teen son into my overgrown yard to see a dead body, perhaps that of an animal; posing as an FBI agent; trying to extort $75,000 from him; and bragging to a neighbor about what I was going to do to him and his family I was going to do to him and his family with my black-market Glock 9mm pistol. These surreal allegations were dismissed in court and the judge deemed him, quote, "not credible," end quote. This court finding meant he would not be able to call the police on false pretenses to have me arrested, which is a great relief to me. Yet I am unable to find peace knowing he has not been held accountable for his actions. For filing false police reports, he has never been held accountable. He has never been held accountable for forging United States Patent and Trademark Office documents, for embezzling monies from me, for fraudulent emails, or filing a forged patent application, all of which are crimes in the state of Illinois.
Thank you, Wendell. We're at our, we're over three minutes. I'm sorry. Maybe, I'll give you 10 seconds if you want to just wrap up.
I can't finish. I can finish in a minute.
Yeah, I want to be respectful just to the time. I'm sorry.
So I come back next week.
Okay. If you'd like to give him your minute, I'll let you do that if you can do it in two minutes. Okay, she ceded a minute to you. Sure, so you can wrap up. Okay.
The police department is in possession of the evidence of all these crimes, but when I asked why this person was not being charged, the officer told me that he considered it a neighborhood dispute. I have never done anything negative to this person or his family. This person has targeted me. There has never been a dispute. I've written a book, which is a self-published memoir titled Trial, which is available at the Evanston Public Library and online sites. A retired criminal law professor, a meritorious, who has read the book stated in a letter to me that, quote, "The justice system has failed you," end quote. I feel our police department has an obligation to enforce our laws, and I'm asking for help to ensure that they do so. I would like it understood that I am not insinuating any inappropriate relationship exists between the police department and this man's lawyer who happens to work for the city of Evanston. I am a 77-year-old terminal cancer patient currently in treatment, and I have lived in an absolute nightmare for the last five years. The irony being, the nightmare has nothing to do with cancer. And I need help and support as I seek justice. If any of you were to recuse yourselves from involvement in this situation because of friendship, political endorsements, donations, or fundraising coffee klatches, that would be respectful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we've got Doreen Price, and then Kelly, yeah, if you'd like to, you can give that to the clerk. Doreen Price, then Kelly Elwood, and then Elizabeth Elwood.
This gentleman, actually, I have to redo my whole, what I have to say because he is, his story is so poignant in terms of the need for social services.
Would you like, Doreen, if you want, I can give you a minute to collect.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, if you want, I can give you a minute to collect your thoughts, and I can go with the Elwoods and then wrap up with you if you'd prefer.
No, no.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll start, we'll start the clock now.
And I'm sorry, Doreen Price, Seventh Ward, Eleanor Ravel. Respectfully honor the fact that you're having me here to listen to, and that's important to me. In terms of what I've heard people say in the course of discussing about the budget and now about this gentleman in terms of his predicament, social services has kind of, I think, taken another turn toward being left out of the equation of what is necessary for Evanston to be not only livable, but I think that the purposes that have been, are going to be discussed should include a vibrant city or a vital city, healthy and neighborly. And if you require that of your contractors, I'm sure you'll get better contractors at the lowest price. Because when we include behaviors, in which we included when I worked for 30 years in pharmaceutical research, behaviors were included as part of the evaluation purpose, and there's no behaviors that are really, to me, obvious in our goals of livability. The hows are as important or more important. I was rescued, really rescued, in 2007 when I lost my husband and I had three tickets, minor tickets issued to me when I was in tears saying I just lost my husband 30 days ago by an officer. I had, I did not know what a panic attack was, except for this kind social worker who gathered me together and basically comforted me and triaged the process to help me be whole again in terms of my relationship to the city. This, however, really traumatized me and then, but he was able to ameliorate that trauma. Now, there's no one around, obviously, this gentleman too, to ameliorate things that could happen with the police department because we're not going to have social services at point of service. We should have social services in City Hall. Last year, I was in a very horrible situation, which I'm not going to go into details, but trust me to say, it would have been avoided instead of having to talk to 10 million people by a social worker who would simply talk to me about my rights and what I'm able to do because I was not afforded the information that I could negotiate or do things on my behalf that I thought I could not, wasn't entitled to do. I had to get the mayor's office to tell me that. In terms of being healthy, you can save money. I cannot believe the number of times that litigation is, in my companies, the pharmaceutical companies since then, since I left, have taken advantage of litigation to take it, to do what they need to do in the name of profit, profitability. And they budget for that. Instead of helping people like retirees, they give them less and budget for litigation. So I'm wondering if the budget can be looked at seriously for liabilities that could be avoided if we have a kinder, gentler Evanston and go back to those values that made us really, really great even though we didn't have the skyscrapers. And we will have better buildings because we will bring people in who have the same heart and commitment to the same vision. And so I'm asking that social work be considered key to Evanston's success. And I support all the social workers, experts here who say, we can't afford to break it down or put it in another black box because we're regressing. And I know we're regressing from personal experience and things that would have been better for me and easier for me had there been a social worker, something as simple as that.
Thank you, Doreen.
Okay. And then liabilities, consider the fact you'll save on liabilities, and I'd like to know from the budget how much we pay in legal liabilities that could be avoided. Have we approached, do it, approach it a different way?
Great. Thank you. Okay, we've got Kelly Elwood and then Elizabeth Elwood, our last two speakers.
My name is Kelly Elwood. I live on the corner of Keene and Gray. I'm here with my daughter, Elizabeth. We are representing the DODs School Community and the DODs PTA, which encompasses the Second, Eighth, and Ninth Wards. We, along with 200 other people that we have petitions from, are coming to ask for your help for getting our kids back and forth to school safely. We really need a crossing guard at Oakden and Gray. We have been hit more than once on our way to school just this year. I distinctly remember a woman who skidded into us and came literally two feet from hitting me. I also remember a man who drove around us purposely through the crosswalk. This doesn't include the people or the times we've hurried across the street or the people we've seen in similar situations. The crosswalk has become increasingly dangerous. We have more traffic coming down Gray now because we have a lot of people that cut through to avoid the Dodge backup that are now cutting through our neighborhood. And we have more families now dropping off at that crosswalk to avoid similar traffic on Dodge. District 65 and Evanston have put our route on the Safe Routes school, so we're right here on the Oakden map. And the school district tells us the first tip to use crosswalks on the way to school. So our children are being directed to this crosswalk, and I would like to make it as safe as possible. It would cost about $21 per kid to keep them safe, and I've even heard from members of the community who would be willing to do this job. We are here to ask for your help, not because this is an inconvenience, but because this is a daily hazard. It's very much an accident waiting to happen. If the budget is going to reflect the values of our city, we must make sure we put our kids as a priority. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, Elizabeth. All right. Excellent. All right.
My name is Elizabeth, and I'm here because I need a crossing guard at my school because more than one time I've been hit, and my friends also have mostly too.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and thank you for coming out, Elizabeth. All right. That completes public comment this evening. We don't have anyone else signed up, so we will move on to the next items in the agenda. So, tonight, we have a very busy night of special order, as everybody knows. Lots of different ordinances and all of that. So having, what I will do is, I will go through each one and then open it. I'll open it for a motion in a second and then for a conversation. Okay. So the first one is SP 1, 2018 City Council Goals. This is four considerations recommended the City Council consider adopting the 2018 City Council Goals. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in your packet on page six is a list of goals which the City Council during my evaluation for the year developed for me. And during the course of that discussion, the council asked that the list come back to the full council for consideration for adoption of City Council Goals for 2018. Happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Fleming.
I have a question. I would like to, and I don't have good language, but suggest that number five is reworded because it's not very clear what our key programs and operations are. At least, it's not clear to me. So I don't know how we do that, but that stuck out for me.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, perhaps, at the council's discussion, it was to transfer all of the goals that you had for me. Perhaps this one maybe is not, doesn't make sense because I think that there were some specific goals, specific projects associated with this with the City Council's discussion. So perhaps it makes sense not to have this one at all.
Right. Now, that, yes, I remember our conversation for you, but those, yes. So I'm happy to have it. It just, maybe if we kind of have these in the elevator and on poster, people like me will say, what are the key programs and operations? So I would say, take it off if people are happy with that or at least clarify.
I would agree with that. Okay. So go ahead and take that one off. Any further conversations about the remaining goals? Okay, seeing none. This is just for consideration, so there's no further action on that.
So we'll take general direction, Mr. Mayor, and I think this is a document that the City Council uses. From time to time, we do post it for the community and for the staff to see, so we'll move forward to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Moving on to SP 2, 2018 Proposed Budget Adjustments. This is for discussion, and City Manager, why don't you start this off?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On page seven of the packet gives an overview of changes to the budget balancing worksheet since we were last together talking about the budget, and it's been several weeks now. Mr. Lyons is here to walk you through the various changes, and I would have you look at page nine of the packet and his staff is gathering. Mr. Lyons is here, so Marty, why don't you just walk us through what's been highlighted in yellow?
Yes, Mr. City Manager, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, Clerk Reed. So, as noted on the screen, this is a document that is familiar to everyone. What we've done is taken what was originally presented earlier this year and noted in yellow several changes, and these are also in the memo in your packet. I will refer to this document so that everyone, residents and folks watching at home can see. So, jumping right into it, we had a correction of an error that tax levies are always listed as a budget amount and not as extended. So please, fire, all of our levies were listed as not as extended, but the general fund was listed as extended, and that means it was 2% higher than it should have been. We extend the 2% extra so that when we get a payment of 99% in total, we make our budget. So this is something that was a correction. It's listed there. To, right below it is, one of the items that was listed for revenues below the line has been moved up above the line, which is a one-cent gas tax. Moving further down, and this will be an ongoing item, but one of the things that we presented to you in a budget memo is reductions in the clerk's budget that the budget team met with the clerk about, and the city clerk does have his own options as well, things that he would like to present to you tonight. But this is a budget team recommended change that has been communicated to the clerk. It's, the $7,307 is less than the 4%, which was about $11,000. But be that as it may, that is a recommendation and changes, and there is a memorandum in the budget memos that details what these are. The, per council discussions in the past several weeks, we have added back in the youth advocate. That was originally a change when we had both victim advocates and youth advocates. So this would be put into the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department with Kevin Brown and his team rather than in Health. And there is, again, for all of these, there are communications regarding these recommended changes. The reclassification of the Environmental Services Coordinator, we've talked about it. This was originally put in at a level of, I believe, it was at $65,000, and this is an addition of another $10,000 based on the refined job descriptions. And we, this is an item that we continue to look at for this position. It has been listed in each case as of January 1. It's not clear that we'll have somebody hired in on that date, but that is the addition there.
And Mr. Lyons, perhaps this is an appropriate time just to talk a little bit more about this position. As you know, as part of the proposed budget, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're proposing to take two of the bureau managers in Public Works and combine them into one. There's been a concern expressed by members of the council as well as members of the community about the importance of keeping a position that would be focused on the urban forest, focused on working with community organizations that are environmentally minded. And so we've gone back through that and a few weeks ago, added this reclassification of Environmental Services Coordinator. Erica Storley, the deputy city manager, is here, and I'd like to ask her to come up. We've continued to look and refine this position. We are not sure the position is being reclassified from a ASME-represented position. We're not sure that the current job description is in your agenda budget memo packet makes sense. Continue to be a union position. We have not had a chance to meet and confer with the union with that. We've also continued to evaluate the job description. There's been a revision that's in the current listing of budget memos, and I also believe that we think that the salary needs to be adjusted once again. And I'll let Ms. Storley take the story from there.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Clerk Reed, City Manager Bobekwitz, Deputy City Manager Erica Storley. Hi. As City Manager Bobekwitz just discussed, we have looked at this several times. We don't feel that the job description that we provided on Friday was completely encompassing of everything. We've had a chance to discuss it with several other employees in the organization. We think that there's a possibility that the pay grade could be elevated because we've established some more concrete details of the job, and that would require higher levels of experience and education that would justify a higher salary on the position. So we're still evaluating that, but we think that it would not make sense that it would be a union represented position. It would be an exempt position and that the requirements of the position would elevate it up to probably a 124 class, which is internal grade, similar to a cultural arts coordinator or any of the other exempt coordinators that are in the city.
And Ms. Storley, then that would take the position, I believe, to a top step of $93,000. Is that correct?
The pay range would be $75,000 to $108,000.
To $108,000. Okay. So we think that if we were to add $15,000 at this juncture, that would take us to probably a midpoint range within that classification then, which is that middle 90s position?
That makes a lot of sense.
So, we'd like to add, and as you'll, and we'll make the first use of this this evening, we've added a second column for your use tonight to try to keep track of adjustments. So we'd like to change that number from 10 to 25. So, we'd like to change that number from $10,000 to $25,000 increase in order to properly represent, oh, okay, it's the third column, properly represent the adjustment there. So, as we're going through, we'll be able to keep a tote of where we're at with the budget adjustments. But I think with this change, with the Environmental Services Coordinator, Mr. DiAgostino, who is one of the two bureau managers who's had his position proposed to be eliminated, you know, he has indicated some interest in this position as it's been reconfigured and the salary's been adjusted, and so, he has decided that being a candidate for bureau manager does not make sense for him professionally at this time. So, we believe that by making this adjustment to this proposed reclassification, that that addresses the council's concern, community members' concern, to keep this expertise on staff. We'll have to see if Mr. DiAgostino will apply and wishes to pursue that. He is not committed to that at this point, but I think going forward as an organization, I think that this is the right position to address the concerns that have been expressed.
And staying on the issue of managing our urban forest, for new council members, what the city does is, in the inoculation of Dutch Elms, we have a reserve policy where we set aside, I say policy, a procedure, where we set aside $250,000 every year, and then in a third year, we spend $750,000. We had $750,000 budgeted last year. We should have only had $250,000 budgeted this year, and it had $750,000. So, we're reducing that to the $250,000 for 2018. What that means is, we'll be doing a nominal amount of inoculations this year. It's a small part of the program. And then, in a future year, we will have set aside money in a general fund reserve account for the total $750,000 approximate to do the citywide Dutch Elm disease inoculation.
Alderman Ruus Simmons?
Could you give me an understanding of this transition in personnel with Mr. DiAgostino leaving? Who would manage the great partnerships, community partnerships that we have with the environmental community as he did?
We are proposing that this Environmental Services Coordinator, a position, would be created in order to do that. Mr. DiAgostino, really, he's done an excellent job with that work, but the reality is, it was a very small part of his overall responsibilities. So, we feel that by reclassifying a position to focus on that, then the balance of his former responsibilities will be combined into a public services bureau manager position. So, I think, as we're proposing this evening, that we will still have this coordinator position available for community members to work with, continue to look at urban forest issues, the species and variety of trees that we are planting to be more resilient. All of those issues would remain with this Environmental Services Coordinator. We also would still remain to have a forestry division supervisor, and that position would really focus, as it has been, on the mechanics of replanting, trimming, removing dead trees, things like that. So, I think this match makes sense.
And this is not a, this position is similar to others. We've mentioned the public arts, but we've also, when Solid Waste was originally in place, we've had positions that manage projects and programs, not people. And that's, and so, that's that community part of it, where we really are searching for the expertise and the experience in that community management. So, you need that, you know, the arborist expertise along with the community management capability. So, that's the, I think that's the biggest change since the last derivation of the job description.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Alderman, when?
Yes, Mr. Lyons, can you explain the Dutch Elm disease issue again? So, I remember when we decided to put aside $250,000 each year so that we would have it when we needed to inoculate the Dutch Elm, the elm trees against Dutch Elm. So, are we not doing that anymore?
No, we still are, and what happened was, we were just off-cycle, meaning that this was a year, meaning that 2018 should have just been a set-aside year, not an actual do the inoculations. We do that once every three years, and so, it was not next year.
Okay, now, I understand. Thank you. That's what I thought.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes. Mr. Mayor and City Manager, and, Mr. Lyons, do you want us to wait and listen to the presentation, or can we make?
We're almost done.
Okay, so, you would rather we wait?
I'll talk to the mayor, but I think we've got, like, a minute left. Yeah, two more items.
Very short.
Could you call on me, Mr. Mayor, when he's finished?
Sure, when we're done, you'll be the first I call on. Alderman Fleming? Do you have anything, or you want to wait? Okay. Go ahead.
So, as you can see, we're down to the bottom of the general fund. Every year, the first meeting in December, we do the abatement ordinances. Each year, it's been the CFO's responsibility to make sure that we look at all of our old bonds, new bonds, everything that we have, to look at what can be abated and what we can't abate. In the 2017 budget, for instance, we had a little over $1.4 million in abated bonds that the general fund was sending money to the debt service fund to abate bonds that we had on the books that we were not levying taxes for. The other part of this story is, is that also, last year, we were reducing our debt service fund balance because we changed a lot of our bonds from a January 1 date all to December 1. And that's significant because if our bond payment is on December 1, we've collected all the taxes we need in both the first installment and the second installment, and we don't need any fund balance in the debt service fund. Unfortunately, that also means there's no money to go use out of that anymore. We are down to a very minimum amount in the debt service fund, so we could not use that as a source to have a soft landing. There is a memorandum that explains this. It's, our debt service is memo number 49, the history on that, and I want to say, do we have a second one for the abatement process? Is it just that one? I'll check. But, the short of it is, we had, we have approximately $1.8 million of bonds that, if we want to keep the debt service levy flat, would need to be abated, but we only have a $1.4 million transfer from the general fund, and I was just rounding, that had been in last year's budget. That means that we need to either increase the transfer from the debt, from the general fund to the debt service levy, or allow the county to levy the tax. If we do not abate, the county will levy the tax. And this is, as is noted in the memo, as we continue to issue our bonds each year for capital projects, then the county is bound to levy a tax on our behalf, on the bondholders' behalf, to pay those bonds off. And we abate them on a case-by-case basis from either TIF, general fund, water, other sources, and out of the $10 million approximately that you'll see on December 11th, we just can't make it with all other sources other than looking at a general fund change. We calculated this about a month earlier than the December 11th would have had us do it. I've instructed staff to make sure we do it before the October 9th date of a proposed budget, so we don't have this showing up as an item that could come up later, because our issue this year, when we issue bonds, will impact next year's abatement. That's why it's on the, on this agenda to look at, do we do $12 million in bonds or $9 million in bonds in the capital? That extra $3 million is $200,000 or $300,000 on the tax levy if we issue that many more bonds. A little complicated, the short of it is, is that in order to abate the bonds, we need to increase the general fund transfer to the debt service fund. And that takes us all the way down to all of our adjustments of a $583,000, and that number was a little bit higher before, but we just took away the $15,000 for changing that job description.
And so, the $583 represents the 15 already removed?
Yes.
Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, one last comment. That is a higher budget surplus than you have seen in many years. I am concerned that, given all the moving parts associated with this year's budget, the changes in fees and charges, the changes in parking regulations, if those are all agreed to, those are all fairly substantial changes, and I think it's very prudent for us to have a fund balance no less than this. I mean, and that $500,000 range would be my recommendation that you consider. So, whatever other changes you all feel are appropriate, both on the revenue side and the expenditure side, it'd be my recommendation that, when we're done, that we're in that 500, we could keep 583, that would be great. I don't know that that's possible, but as high to that area as possible. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Just as a follow-up there, that connects to our 2017, where we are concerned about ending the year balance, and we think we have a good plan for that, but showing that we're looking at having a slight surplus next year, when we had issues of revenues in 2017, shows good long-term planning, and it, not just for the purposes of doing long-term planning, but for our continued stability.
Hold on. Okay, thank you. I know, I know the clerk also has a budget and wants to make sure the council members understand what his, what his request is as well, so I've asked him. He's going to pass something around right here and then just real quickly talk us through, so we have that information, and then we'll start this conversation. We'll start with you, Alderman Rainey, as requested.
Not reflected in the, Marty Fabelis, or whoever's controlling that scroll up, what's not reflected there is my, my request to maintain two deputy clerks in the office. That's the level that we had when I came into office. The baseline cut amount is based on a almost 40% reduction in my budget from 2017, where a staff member was transferred over to the, where a staff member was transferred over to the collector's office that dealt with, that's dealing with passports and real estate transfer stamps. Real estate transfer stamps is a function, when I came into office, that, within the code, is something that belongs in, under the purview of the CFO. So, I'm hoping to keep, maintain two deputy clerks in the office based on 2017's budget. Some of the areas that I hope the office will focus on that we haven't is around election turnout. We are all fans here, most of us are fans here, of the STAR Communities rating, and one of the ratings for STAR Communities is to achieve voter participation in non-presidential elections, over 60%. That is an effort that I want my office to lead on, to increasing voter participation here in the city. Another thing to offset, the total cost of, to maintain two deputy clerks would be an $85,000 increase. That includes salary and benefits. As I stated earlier, passports moved over to the collector's office, and if I'm not mistaken, there is, there are talks about getting rid of passport services next year. If that, you know, with us keeping two deputy clerks, we'd be able to take passports back. The year-to-date revenue for passports thus far is $28,000. I suppose it'll end over $30,000, so, almost half of the cost of the deputy clerk would be covered by passports moving to my office. Also, my office is open until 7:00, so revenue for passports could potentially increase and potentially exponentially if we're open until 7:00 for folks to access the office. This year, to, you know, to make sure that my office came in as close to budget as possible, I took no pension this year. I also took the furlough day, just like every other city employee as well, so I've made sure that I've had skin in the game. And also, if the City Council chooses to adopt the budget that's proposed by the manager's office, this clerk's office would potentially be the lowest-funded clerk's office in the state. If you flip past the pages that have the budget, you'll see a comparison of a number of municipalities, and Evanston's general fund allocation, percentage of our general fund that we allocate to the clerk's office, if we adopt this budget, would be a 1/16th of a percent, and that's by far the lowest of many communities, many comparable communities. If we kept going through the list, I'm sure we'd find that, as you can see, by far the lowest-funded clerk's office if we accept this budget. I'm happy to answer any questions from members of the council.
It could just mean that you're the most efficient clerk's office, too.
No.
All right. So, let's go ahead, let's go ahead then, and begin, again, this is a proposed budget for...
So, is there no direction with maybe looking at?
So, I think we're going to, I think what we're going to do is, I wanted to have the council members have that information. Now, we're going to start to go through all of these special orders of business, and I'm sure at some point, the council will raise this question about the clerk's office and what to do on that. Okay? We have a lot of, we have a lot of different items that we've got to go through that are on this agenda, so...
And...
Okay, so, let's just, we'll do that. We'll, I'm sure we'll get back and talk about the clerks at some point. Let me start off with Alderman Rainey. I know you wanted to start this conversation, and we're on SP 2 right now.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council and City Manager, I am very concerned about the Levy Center, and I've expressed this to the Levy Center Foundation, to the members of Levy Center. I have heard from them over and over and over again. I've been, I've been intimately involved with that organization since way before it was constructed there, and it needs, it needs intensive supervision and direction. And I am going to move that we restore the full-time center management, manager that has been eliminated in the amount of $122,735. What I wanted to be able to do is to then also comment on the Chandler Center and the Ecology Center, but I can't do that because I can't find an allocation for the Ecology Center in terms of supervision. So, I see how you combine the Levy Center and the Chandler Center, but I'm not interested in doing that, of course, and I, I don't see any point in taking, you know, $6,000 and putting it someplace. So, all I can do at this point is, is say that I want to restore the $122,735 and eliminate the combination of the Levy Center and the Chandler Center.
Is that a motion, Alderman Rainey?
That is a motion. It is. It's a motion.
Any discussion?
And I realize we have to look for, you know, the other side of the equation, the revenue, to do that, but for the time being, I'd just like to restore that amount of money and that position.
Okay, so, we've got the motion, we've got a second. Alderman, so, for...
Sure, just Alderman Rainey's point, what do we do about Chandler, then?
Yeah, I am concerned about that, yeah.
I guess, do we have a, I just want to get that out there that I am concerned about.
Certainly.
One of the things, one of the things that I was thinking about is, the person who is currently being relieved of that position is a longtime employee, and I am certain that that position, the salary included extreme seniority, I would imagine, so, I'm not sure what a starting salary would be for that position. So, if we could talk about that, too.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Rainey, members of the council, Lawrence Hemingway, the Director of Parks, Recreation and Community Services is here. We've looked at options. Our recommendation would be that we would manage that facility through the central department operation, Karen Hawke, the Assistant Director, who currently is responsible for the Ecology Center and the Noyes Cultural Arts Center, would take on that responsibility. I think there's some opportunities for us. This will be the first time there's been a new center manager at Chandler in 30 years, I'm sorry?
31.
In 31 years. And so, I think we would like first to see what, what we can do there, and certainly through the course of next year, if not longer, have Ms. Hawke work with the staff at Chandler and, in meeting with Mr. Hemingway. And Ms. Hawke, earlier today, they feel very confident if the council would choose to go this way. I'll mention, of course, before, that the Levy Center manager has had other duties over time, has managed the Ecology Center when Ms. Farrar was there, when Ms. Hawke was there. So, there is a history of that position, also managing a smaller center. However, if the council chooses to reinstate the full-time Levy position, we would, we would not move forward, and we would continue to recommend to have the Chandler position eliminated, and we would manage it in other ways.
Okay, Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, quick question. So we, the manager for Levy left. Is that...
The incumbent manager for both Levy and Chandler took advantage of an opportunity to resign prior to the end of the year. So both of those managers have separated from the city.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Rayney?
Yes. So, first of all, in defense of the Levy Center having a full-time manager, I believe that we're going into a new era, and that so many new people are going to be using the Levy Center, and it's such a variety. And not only that, we're also talking about adding programs that, let's give it, the new manager, an opportunity to really beef up that center. It's got a lot of things going for it, but I think, given what you've just said, then the time is now, once we decide to keep the full-time position, to remove the $128,000 that we've used to combine, I think we need to do that. I mean, so we need to take that off the spreadsheet.
So, this is my first time. So with council action, so I've got a motion and a second on that motion. Can I take the roll? I see no further comment.
Can I just have clarity on the motion? So it's to just have a full-time Levy Center person who does not have responsibilities at Ecology or Chandler?
Correct. The motion is to reinstate the full-time person, or...
To remove the Chandler, I think I'm going to do it, and to remove the combined Chandler-Levy Center manager at $128,000.
Right, so we would make two adjustments to this motion.
And then, just for clarity's sake, and I know we're not deciding that right now, but the thought at this point is that Karen Hawke would then manage the Chandler Center.
We don't have a vote yet.
So we not, we don't touch the Chandler Center right now?
Yes, so Ms. Hawke would coordinate the staff at Chandler at this point, yes.
And who would coordinate the staff at Ecology Center?
And Ms. Hawke would continue to do that as well.
She does it.
Both centers have very small staff. Again, we've had internal discussions. We feel if this is the way the council wishes to proceed, that this is the way we could do that. I think the opportunity to take a fresh look at Chandler, something we have not done for a very long time, actually is pretty energizing for the staff. There's some longtime staff who've worked at Chandler, who see this as an opportunity to really rethink that. So I think, as Alderman Rayney has said, while we can continue to look at Levy growing, I think there's some opportunities at Chandler that this may give us an opportunity to flesh out as well. So we feel very comfortable, Mr. Hemingway and his staff feel comfortable. There's longtime standing staff at Chandler who are excellent employees. I think everyone feels that if this is the direction of the council, the Chandler will not suffer by doing this.
Okay, Alderman Rue Simmons?
Well, my question's been answered.
Okay. All right, seeing no further discussion, we've got the motion that was seconded on having a full-time manager at Chandler for 2018.
Levy.
Excuse me?
Levy.
At Levy, excuse me, I'm sorry. At Levy. Could you take the roll?
Alderman Suffertin?
Yes.
Alderman Revel?
Aye.
Alderman Rayney?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Yes.
Okay, so that, let's go ahead and adjust the budget that passed on 7-2, to have a full-time manager at Levy. Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the past practice of the council has been, these are, in essence, straw votes. And so with the council making these decisions, we make the adjustments here. It's our hope that at the end of the evening, you have made all the adjustments to the proposed budget that you will, and then we will prepare the appropriate ordinances for you to take action on next week, on the 27th.
Okay. Okay. All right, other points that people would like to discuss with this budget? Alderman Revel?
So, do we need to make a motion, then, to add to the salary for the Environmental Services Coordinator, or is that assumed to be part of sort of a motion from Mr. Lyons?
And, Alderman Revel, just before we move forward, I think we have taken off one too many positions, because you did not add back in a full Levy Center manager, correct?
Yes, I did.
So you've taken out the combined one?
I took away the tie. I did.
Okay, but then there's still Levy Center manager not budgeted?
No, I said the Recreation Center manager.
You've taken away the leashing?
Correct, but as you look at the screen, and this is what Alderman Rayney was also, I think, pointing out, what we've done is, the 142,889 is the removal of that person who was incumbent, their total cost. Then the removal of the other center director is the removal of that incumbent amount, and the addition of the 122,735.
That was the addition.
That's the new Levy Center position.
Yes.
Okay, because the bottom line's only changed by $5,000?
Correct, because the net impact of what we've just said is that, really, the only thing we're doing here is changing from having a three-quarter, one-quarter, to having a one and a zero, and the Assistant Director position, as well as staff in Parks and Recs, will handle the Chandler Newburger Center.
Back to Alderman Revel's question, then. What we are proposing is just that. So if the council's comfortable with that proposal, then we would say there would be no further action would be needed. It would remain a part of the proposed budget.
So, I think that there were people, when we just did this vote, again, that thought that the change was much greater than that net change was, and their vote may have been very different if it was, you know, $5,000.
Yes.
I understand. It wasn't clear to me, either.
Well, that's because we left the Chandler job, we discussed that that director was a longtime senior member.
Correct.
Bringing somebody new in is going to be a much less...
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That's already been eliminated.
So I think that, based on that confusion, I would move that we reopen the vote to allow everybody to vote based on, I think the spreadsheet didn't catch up with your, I don't think two of my colleagues to my right understood...
I agree with that.
...the motion based on what was showing on the screen. And now it's caught up, so I think that they had misunderstood that. So I move that we reopen the vote to redo the roll call.
Well, then, one of us would, can he do that, since he...
He can do it.
These are straw votes, you don't have to follow...
Why don't we just do a voice vote? All in favor of this change?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so Alderman Fleming?
All right, so I do have a question about the new Environmental Services Coordinator. So Deputy Director, Deputy City Manager, Storley mentioned that this would kind of be a comparable position to, like, our cultural arts manager and such, where they manage programs but not staff. So my question is, would this classification and salary match that of comparable managers? You gave a number of 142, or whatever it was.
Why don't we just run through a few? So we had mentioned the Cultural Arts Coordinator, and that salary is...
Right, so the Cultural Arts Coordinator is currently a grade 124, with that salary range of 75 to 108. This Environmental Services Coordinator would be a comparable position, managing programs, not people, same 124 grade, same range.
So the Equity and Empowerment Coordinator?
Equity and Empowerment Coordinator is also that same range, 124. So this would also be on par with the Equity and Empowerment Coordinator.
What about Transportation and Mobility?
That is a step down from that level, just due to the nature of the position and the job duties that it has.
How about Sustainability Coordinator?
Same, 124.
Okay, so...
All right, thank you.
We think this makes sense.
All right, so do I move forward now with my other budget questions, or do we go...
Let me get Alderman Braithwaite, and then I'll come back, and we can get something.
I guess I'm not understanding what the $25,000 is. I thought originally that was the coordinator's position and salary, but I think you just explained it differently, and I'm, there's a little disconnect in my head right now.
We had originally budgeted this position at a $65,000 range, but after updating the job description based on the feedback from the community and the council, we've now added in additional responsibilities that require the higher job, or the job qualification, so the budgeted salary is going from 65 to approximately 90.
Right, so, but I'm still looking at that $25,000, that's the part...
That's just because it's adding...
So it's, okay, it's adding to...
Haven't been doing really well cutting anything just yet, so.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So there's an open position in Public Works Agency currently that is going to be reclassified into this. That's why the full salary is not on the sheet.
And then how does this position compare to what Kumar is currently doing for the environmental community?
There's some complementary aspects to it. I'm sure they will be working closely in coordination, because there's a lot of recycling and waste reduction initiatives that are part of the position, but the majority of the position is managing the urban forest and working with the community groups. So they will be working in tandem on some issues, but it's definitely a separate position, managing a different aspect of the environmental landscape.
Thank you.
Alderman Fleming? You can move the topic.
Oh, all right, so I'm going to move on to the social, well, first to the crossing guard. So I, that is a school in my ward, and I would like for us to approve the, I believe it was right under $7,000, to add a crossing guard there at the intersection of Oakton and Gray.
Seven grades.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
All right, I'm on a roll, so I'm going to keep going.
Just a moment, if we may. So, Mr. Lyons, I believe we'd cost that at $18,000, is that correct, Mr. Storley?
No.
I'm sorry?
The memo's...
79.
I'm sorry. $7,000?
79.
$7,900? Okay, I'm sorry, just want to make sure we keep up.
Change.
So $7,900, and that takes the fund balance to, survey says, 580, okay?
Did you have something else, Alderman Fleming?
Yes, so my next one is the budget memo for the, to actually implement our complete streets policy. And so that one would essentially add sidewalk repair where needed on the streets where we're repaving, and so Director Stoneback made a proposal that I can't find, but anyhow, it cuts off as proposed two streets this year from our water main and from our repaving account, whatever that's called, so that we can also improve the sidewalks. And so my theory for that is, we're going to this transit-friendly, we obviously know we have the 50-50, which people may or may not participate in to repair their sidewalks, but if we want to have the most livable city and also have people have a, you know, safe pedestrian experience, I think it is worthwhile for us to cut back on one street so that we can implement improving the sidewalks as needed, so the resident has a new street and a new sidewalk, and then that just makes it safer for everyone's experience, and then those people whose streets are not on schedule can also continue to participate in our 50-50 sidewalk. Sorry, I don't have the budget memo number in front of me, but it was one of the ones from this week.
All right, if city staff can figure out the budget number on that, and then in the meantime, I'm going to go to Alderman Revel.
Well, I'm wondering whether there are any savings that would be realized if we combined the sidewalk improvements with the water main and street resurfacing projects compared to just doing the sidewalks on their own, because I'm wondering whether there are potentially other sidewalks that are in much worse shape in the city that might warrant improving ahead of the ones that just happen to be in the area of a water main or street resurfacing project.
Alderman Revel, members of the council, I think we are challenged with sidewalks. We have a greater need for funding from the city for sidewalk repair than we could possibly have. I see Laura coming into the room, and I hate to put her on the spot here right now, but what is the, what's the approximate backlog for 50-50 sidewalks citywide that are not related to any kind of city capital project?
Hello, everyone. My name is Laura Biggs, I'm a city engineer. So we do about $200,000 worth of sidewalk repairs, and about, we budget about $150,000, and the end result, the $50,000 is paid for by residents. We find we're going over by about $10,000 to $15,000 a year, and taking that money from other projects, basically.
And how many petitions are waiting?
We don't have any petitions waiting for sidewalks. That 10, extra $10,000 to $15,000 generally covers it.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
The question you asked about what would be the impact, part of the issue is the management of the 50-50 sidewalk program as we do it. We only fix the sidewalks once the homeowner actually pays the invoice. That process is incredibly involved and would probably hold up the larger projects because of the time it takes to go out, work with residents, get their agreement to do it, go back out, send out invoices, get them to pay them. It would be hard to manage that within another project. It could be done, but it would present some challenges.
But just to clarify, that would not happen if we, for these streets that you have identified on the memo, we would be on the street anyway, so we would assess the sidewalk squares any repair, and we don't have to have that time delay with the resident.
The residents would not be paying any of the share, it would all be paid for the city, by the city. So basically, the project manager of that project would just go out, mark the squares that were going to be done, and the whole back and forth with residents about, am I going to be in the program, am I not going to be in the program, that part would be eliminated. So it'd be pretty easy to just include it if the residents were not involved in paying.
My other advocacy point is that in our capital improvement plan, that I guess we'll discuss tonight or next week, we have also further reduced the bicycle pedestrian improvement, traffic calming budget by another $150,000. So I don't know exactly where that falls in with our 50-50, but we have more reductions coming in our capital improvement. So I know there are people in my ward who need sidewalk repairs but who can't afford that more, who just choose not to use the $200 for that, and I'm willing to lose one of my own streets that has pretty bad sidewalks, so that for the greater good of the city, we can get moving with this sidewalk improvement. Also, I think we're going to transit-friendly. We know we have only two, I think, Howard Street, Linden, and Davis Street that are actually ADA accessible for our train routes. So we're trying to move to transit-friendly and transit-oriented, but sidewalks is definitely a part of that.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Wilson?
And it's my impression that if we were to opt to do the sidewalks, if we can keep that slide up, ooh, stay where you were. Yeah. So we're not going to be adversely impacting the water main streets, we're going to only be adversely impacting the MFT street, resurfacing streets, is that correct?
No, we would remove one of the water main streets...
Okay.
...in addition. Yeah...
So go down, all right. Okay, all right, so...
So the way that the water main street was selected to be removed is, this is the water main that has the least maintenance problems of the water mains that were selected to be done. So the money doesn't necessarily match up one for one, but if we have to remove a street, this is the one that our staff said they would find most acceptable to remove from the program.
All right, so it'll take like 101 years instead of 100 years to finish the water main?
Yes.
Dave's shaking his head. All right, yeah, so I see that the number is 380. So if we didn't take that one out, then we'd really be looking at taking, you know, three or four streets off the MFT list.
The issue really just becomes the mixing of funding sources. So MFT is funded a certain way, and certain things are allowed, and the projects are designed a certain way. and sidewalks would be an acceptable use of MFT funding, but the water main streets, which do include some street resurfacing, are funded through a totally separate funding source, so it's not so simple to just say, we'll only remove an MFT street and it will cover everything, or we'll only remove a water main street and it'll cover everything, because basically what happens is you're using general obligation bonds on the MFT program or MFT funds on a program that's not usually funded through MFT, but it could be done.
But what you have on screen does not affect general obligation projects, these are all MFT or water.
There, there would be some general obligation.
We just need to make sure we let the council know whether or not this is helping the GO issue that we've also been talking about.
It is helping the GO issue, because the water main projects are generally funded where the water main pays for the water main and the trench patching above the water main, and a full street resurfacing is paid for by general obligation bonds, so the funding sources there are combined, if we eliminate that street, we are eliminating $170,000 worth of general obligation bonds, a portion of which may go to pay for the sidewalk on other streets, but we would not use the full $170,000, we would be using about $50,000.
Okay, Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Laura, a few years ago, we asked the public to go out and tell us where the sidewalks were bad, have we done anything with that list, is there?
The list that I'm aware of is where the age-friendly folks went out and told us where sidewalks were bad, they tended to focus right where there were nursing homes or senior centers or healthcare facilities of some kind, and what we did is then we went and included them on a list of people that are contacted for voluntary participation in the 50/50 sidewalk program, and quite a number of them did participate, but right now, we don't have a mechanism for mandatory enforcement of sidewalk repair.
We don't?
No.
Wow. Given the liability concerns of the condition of sidewalks, I would think we, we would. I'm, I'm surprised here that we don't.
And perhaps, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Stoneback is here, maybe, Dave, you can talk to us a little bit about what we, because there, there is some limited patching and grinding that we do in sidewalks when a safety issue arises, so perhaps you can just describe that.
Good evening, Mayor, City Clerk Alderman Dave Stoneback, Public Works Agency Director. First, the ordinance does allow for mandatory sidewalk repair, but it has been the city's policy not to do that, we replace sidewalks using the 50/50 program, when we are made aware of uneven sidewalks or danger spots, Public Works Agency tends to do a temporary patch for those, we encourage the residents to participate in the 50/50 program, but if they do not, we wind up placing asphalt or some other material to try to level out the sidewalks that are not a tripping hazard.
Right, and, and I'm going back to Alderman Ravel's point, because I think, if I'm understanding it correctly, if we're focusing on streets that are going to be resurfaced anyway, and that's when we go down the street and we look for the sidewalk parts that need to be patched, then are we, are we ignoring then sidewalks that may be in greater disrepair throughout the city, I mean, I can think of a whole bunch of them that we should be doing, and, and I am, I am frankly concerned about the liability, I'd like to know from Corporation Council, what, when it's litigated, is there a difference that sort of the, the, I don't know, the standard for, above which we would be open to, for more liability, I seem to recall in one instance, we, that was part of the case.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Clerk Grant for our Corporation Council, with respect to sidewalk cases, each fact pattern has its own attendant circumstances and can be different, but one of the generalities is the concept of open and obvious, and one of the things where the city has been extremely successful in the last eight to nine years is litigating these sidewalk cases, both on the summary judgment stage and all the way up to verdict after a jury trial, and one of the things that we emphasize is that the city may, may be liable in instances where it has constructive or apparent notice, which is a difficult legal standard even in Cook County for plaintiffs and their lawyers to meet, so what we do is we take a cautious yet very considerate approach, working with the Public Works Administration, to, to, to assess issues as they come up on an as-needed basis, in terms of liability issues, just speaking in generalities, I would be loathe to, to talk about situations on a citywide basis, because again, sidewalk cases by the very nature are very fact-intensive and fact-specific, all I can say is that working with the Public Works Agency, the Law Department has been able to constrict liability in these instances, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you, so the key really is when, when a sidewalk problem is reported, that we get out there right away and we attempt to solve it, whether it's patching or grinding or whatever we do.
And that is our practice, I'm sorry, that is our practice to try to patch them as soon as we're made aware of the deficiency, in case the city has used 50/50 money, budgeted for a 50/50 sidewalk to replace city-owned sidewalks, and one is we leased a property from along the canal and on, I think it was Lincoln Street last year, that sidewalk was in very poor condition, so the city just paid for the replacement of that sidewalk, so we, we try to maintain the sidewalk around city-owned properties, the other sidewalks are done by the 50/50 program.
Okay, so even in, in the situation where a condition warrants a repair, we don't go out and tell the homeowner that they must participate in the 50/50 program and replace their sidewalk?
We do not do that.
Okay.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, we've just spent about five or 10 minutes explaining what our policy is regarding broken sidewalks, in addition to that, though, we do have a community development block grant program where we will do almost an entire block in a community development block grant area where there are broken sidewalks and curbs for free if the, the neighborhood qualifies, however, what we're talking about here is a whole different policy, and I think instead of in the heat of the moment of, of budget deliberations, I don't think we ought to change our policy, it seems to be working, and to, and to go this route, I, I don't think this is the proper time to change the policy, I think it would be a good idea, and I can't believe that we aren't doing it, is when our, our engineering people and Public Works people go out to assess a street to be repaved, if they see terribly crumbling sidewalks, you don't report it, you know, to Public Works and say, we need to patch the sidewalk, but, I mean, other than that, I, I just don't think we ought to include sidewalk repair with, with street resurfacing, we, we have, we have a way of repairing sidewalks, and I don't think we ought to do it this way.
If I just may interject.
Besides, somebody, some, I mean, there, money is going to be taken away from something else in order to do this, and it's, it's not equitable, we were always talking about being equitable, this way it's not equitable, because other people won't be getting the service that they normally get with the money to pave streets.
Alderman Winn?
Yes, I, I've thought about this a lot, and I think, to me, the, the decision to not do a water main project, to me, has more consequences than, is balancing out is not the right, the wise decision, because a failure of a water main is a catastrophic infrastructure failure which costs multiple times to fix it in an emergency, and if we decide to opt into this route, then we're, over time, like every five years, not doing, what, a mile of water main, by your calculation, am I doing the math right, Dave?
Over five years, it could total up to, yeah.
A mile, a mile of water main not being done, so I don't want to make that choice, I would rather that we continue to maintain our infrastructure, and if this water main was already flagged, as, this street was already flagged as needing repair, I would rather do that and then stay with the sidewalk repair policy, but Alderman Fleming, I do credit you with creativity on this one, but I, but I think the water main infrastructure is so critical, and failure is not an option for us on that, if we can choose it not to have it fail.
Alderman Wilson?
Thank you, and, and I was leaning towards wanting to do the, what I'll call it, the sidewalk program, but I do have to agree with Alderman Winn on, on the water main issue, because we're already behind on the water mains, I think significantly, so it's probably an understatement, but what I would like to do, and not in this budget, but maybe over the course of the next year, is, is look at this, because I think it's a great idea, and there are efficiencies in doing it at the same time, so maybe over the course of the next year, we can come up with a way to maybe make something along these lines work, and there's just not room in this, for this, for this year, I guess, but, yeah, I don't want to defer on any of the water main streets.
Thank you, Alderman Brathwaite?
Thank you, and I'll also support Alderman Wilson, it doesn't look like there's gonna be enough votes to get it through this evening, but at least to continue to look at it as an option.
Okay, Alderman Fleming?
All right, so, I see it's not going anywhere, but I do want to point out to the council, we do have a policy for this, so back in May, I believe, Director Nyden, or Leonard, I guess, brought this up, so we voted to pass our complete street policy, which this is the complete street policy, so I'm not that creative, and then I made it up, it's the complete street policy, now we can just choose to not implement it at this time, but we did, we do have a policy, we do have a resolution, I think it passed unanimously for complete streets, and this is, this is the complete street policy.
Right. Okay, all right, in regards, again, we're still on SP2, the proposed budget adjustments, are there any additional conversation points? Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I did want to include in the Airbnb services, the tax that we include commercial BNB's.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All right.
And that's, that's, Mr. Mayor, that, that's a matter of fairness, I don't think we can, we can tax mom and pops who might want to be renting out a room on Airbnb and not tax commercial BNB's.
All right, all right, seeing, seeing no lights, we'll go ahead and just take a vote, we've got a motion on the floor to include BNB's, same with the Airbnb tax, and a second, did?
I was just gonna make a small comment, I, I think that, and Alderman Fisk, I completely agree with your, your point and sentiment, but when we passed the ordinance originally, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with it, because we put a number of restrictions on those businesses, and that, you know, at some point down the road, I think we might want to revisit what the restrictions are, tonight's not the night, but I'm just, you know, gonna, that's just by way of explaining my, my intended vote on this.
Alderman Fisk?
And that, and that's fine.
Okay, okay, Alderman Sufferin?
So I guess my question is, are we taxing them at the same rate as we would the Airbnbs or using the hotel rate, what is the proposed rate?
Alderman Sufferin, members of the council, we had proposed the same as the hotel rate.
Okay, and then as, their operating guidelines are a lot more restrictive than hotels, though, as they stand right now, right?
That is correct.
Okay, correct.
All right, Alderman Resonance?
If we're gonna vote on it, can we get an explanation on what restrictions they have? I understand they can't sell liquor or some other things like that, so can we get?
Can't sell liquor, they can't sell merchandise.
Okay, let's.
No signage.
Okay, let's.
It's not a hotel, they're not, not saying it to you, but saying it to council, they're not hotels, so it, I'm just ready to call the question.
Okay.
Could I have an explanation on what the restrictions are, if we're gonna vote on it, what the limitations are, how we've, anyone, how we've decided not to tax them because of the restrictions, Alderman Wilson?
We can pull up the code if you have a discus.
All right, they're gonna pull up.
I remember just, you know, the general things, I don't think they can have signage, signage, I don't, they can't get a liquor license.
Right.
Can't sell merchandise. Can't sell merchandise, I don't remember what the other ones are off the top of my head.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a ton of stuff, but I, again, I think those are things that we probably ought to revisit, just policy-wise, down the road, but that's not in front of us.
All right, let's go to Alderman Fisk, and then we're gonna call, we're gonna take the vote.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Simmons, I, I think we can talk about this in the future, but I, I think it's important to remember that the, the extraordinary vote on the part of the council was to allow basically a commercial use in an R1 single-family zone, we've never done this before, and it was the feeling of the council that these were, these, the two commercial BNB's were something that the council wanted to vote in favor of, and they did, but the restrictions that are on them are, are basically to protect the integrity of the R1 zone, we don't allow stores to operate or other, a lot of other types of activities and businesses to operate, you can look at the zoning ordinance and see what the permitted and special uses are, but to, to allow basically, you know, two small hotels to be operating as commercial, you know, commercial activities in an R1 zone is an extraordinary, extraordinary change from the, the protections that we give to, to the R1 zoning district, maybe Alderman Winn can explain it better than I.
Well, I'd like to add some.
Let's go, we're gonna go with Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Winn.
I've said in the past that I will only support taxing the two-bed and breakfasts when we license all the bed and breakfasts, because we know we have other bed and breakfasts in this town.
Right.
That we have our eyes closed to, and we, I know some of us know exactly where some of them are, and I think it's unfair to single out the, the two famous ones and let the others operate under the radar.
Thank you, Alderman Winn?
I know of no other BNB's, Alderman Rainey, anymore, there, the, the two that you're referring to did exist in the third ward, and they don't anymore.
It does exclude.
And, you know, if we're not gonna tax the BNB's, then we should not tax the Airbnbs, because Airbnbs don't have a liquor license, if that's the distinguishing issue that we're making, this excluding the BNB's then on is a liquor license or selling merchandise, then we shouldn't tax the Airbnbs.
I'm not arguing.
They're, the Airbnbs are providing accommodations, overnight accommodations, the BNB's are, are providing accommodations, and Alderman Rainey, you give me the names of locations where you know there's a BNB operating, I'll call it in.
I'm not a snitch.
I'll be one. It won't, it won't be, it won't be for my ward, I'll be the snitch for anything in your ward.
Don't be so defensive, I didn't say where they were.
Just call the question.
I'm just, I'm just saying that we're, we're giving an exception to two BNB's, and the reason why they don't have a liquor license is because they're in a residential neighborhood, just like we would not give a liquor license to a homeowner who is selling a room in their home overnight, it doesn't prohibit someone who's a guest at the BND from, from BYOB-ing, which is probably what people do at Airbnbs.
Okay, so Alderman Wilson, I think you were just looking at the code, and then I want to go ahead and just take a vote, so we can move on to the others.
And so, it's pages and pages, pages and pages long, and I'm looking at it very, very quickly, so I, I don't disagree, Alderman Winn, I, I don't see specific exclusions, as I, again, I said, I was speaking from memory, I don't see some of these things specifically excluded, but I don't see them provided for, so Alderman Simmons, I guess I can't, I can't fully answer your question without, you know, spending more time on.
How many restrictions, how many restrictions?
I don't think it'll, it provides for allowing a liquor license, I think you have to, but again, I'm shooting from the hip here, so.
So what you're saying is there aren't that, as many restrictions as you thought? Is that correct?
I'm not sure, but I, it, it looks like there. I'm not sure, but I, it, it looks like they're, they are not specifically prohibited, but I don't know if they're allowed without looking at the rest of the code.
Let's go ahead, let's go, let's go ahead and...
So I just, I just don't want to have misstated anything, so.
Sure, sure, thank you. Let's go, let's go ahead. The motion on the floor is to include the bed and breakfasts along with the Airbnb in the proposed tax. We've got a motion in a second. Could you go ahead and take the roll on this?
Point of information, Mr. Mayor.
I want to do the roll, that's too much.
Is it, is it to include them both, or is it just to add the bed and breakfasts?
All bed and breakfasts.
Just to add the bed and breakfasts to the already taxed Airbnb?
Okay. All right.
This is a proposed tax.
Proposed tax.
This is a proposed tax, yep. Yeah, go ahead and take the roll. Alderman Suffertin?
Yes.
Alderman Revel?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Fleming?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk?
Hi.
Alderman Braithwaite?
No.
Alderman Winn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
No.
Okay, that motion fails five to four. So the proposed tax would just apply to Airbnb. Okay, any other topics that folks want to discuss? Alderman Fleming?
All right, so can I, can we go down to SP15? Is it allowed now during the discussion?
Uh, no, we're still on, we're still on SP2. This is proposed budget adjustments, so we're just on the adjustments, then hopefully we'll get through the other stuff fairly quickly after we go through the third quarter financial report. Alderman, did you have something then, Alderman Fleming, or you want to...
Okay, so then can we do, I think this is in the same thing, the victim services?
The what?
The victim services.
Yeah, you could talk about victim services now if you want.
Okay, so I have some concerns for this, looking at the new job description. Let me just find it. So in looking at the new job description, I appreciate the trauma-informed care and it, and definitely the kind of coordination of services this outlined. I think what I am concerned about is, well, one, the three-part-time staff, just making sure that coverage allows for the need and the community, but then also there's a lot of talk in the job descriptions about training and doing a lot of training in the community and training of the staff and, and so forth. I think training is mentioned like eight times when I looked. And so what it doesn't, for me, communicate in the job description is what I think, or I understand the jobs to be, which is working with the victims and more emphasis, emphasis on this, because I would want that to be, I assume that's job number one, and so I want the job description to reflect that a little more, so as people, if we go this route of people are applying, they're very clear as to what the job is, that there is some victim services and, you know, full-on counseling or pseudo-counseling or whatever we're calling that, and not as much administrative duties as it seems to lay out to me in the job description. So I guess I have, so I guess my motion is to keep it as it is.
Okay, keep it as it is, and then they, just, okay.
Wait, what'd you say, Doc?
You want, I'm sorry, so your motion is to keep four full-time, just like the city has right now?
Oh, no, my motion, I guess it's to keep, when I say keep it as it is, sorry, it's the two full-time that we have now.
Alderman, there are, there are currently two positions that are filled and two positions that are currently vacant.
All right, so then my motion is to reorganize the two full-time positions.
To what?
Second.
No, to, to reorganize from four full-time to two full-time.
Okay.
I did.
Okay, so it's open for discussion. Our city manager Bob Quitz, your light's on.
And I'd like to ask Director Thomas Smith to come up. Our concern is coverage. We want to make sure that we can provide 24/7 on-call coverage for this, and our concern is that with only two people, the reliability to do that is really something we're concerned about. Alderman Fisk asked today for a survey of what other communities do, and quite honestly, I was pretty shocked to see what other communities do, that in many communities, if you have trauma between nine and five, you're in good shape. If you don't, sorry. I think as I've, as we've had this discussion with the council, it seems that the most important thing we can do is to have someone there whenever is needed, and I think that to have two full-time folks, I think we're very concerned that we'll be able to deliver on that, so I...
That is correct. Good evening, Ivana Thomas Smith, Health Director, Mayor Hagerty, City Clerk Reed, and council members. That would be incredibly difficult to manage a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week coverage with just two full-time employees. The ask was to have a full-time manager and to have three part-time employees working 28 to 30 hours, so there can be some overlap, and also some scheduling for beyond the nine-to-five hours, which unfortunately, a lot, well, unfortunately, some incidents just occur in the evening hours and occur on the weekend hours, and so not having that coverage would be incredibly concerning. And so from a professional standpoint, I, I don't see how it could work with just two full-time employees.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Thank you. So absolutely, coverage is everything, especially with the needs that you're responding to. I think I was more concerned about the job description and the, the service that would be provided, and having less of a referral and more of service being provided by our staff.
Sure, well, well, what may not be clear in the job description, when you talk about short and long-term case management, that is victim services. That is not at all suggesting just a referral model. There will be some referrals made to appropriate organizations as that worker deems necessary or that manager deems necessary, but the actual employee will provide that short and long-term case management, whether that's individual counseling, whether that's group counseling, and then of course referrals as appropriate. But referral would not be the first initial point of contact.
As, as proposed, would it be more referrals than we're doing now, or would it be in the same...
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. That is not what I envision at all.
Alderman Wilson?
So, excuse me, the, the, the two positions that are filled, how are they do, how are they managing the after-hours work?
I think it would be best for Chief Eddington to respond.
Okay.
Good evening, Your Honor, City Clerk, City Manager, and Alderman. The coverage with the two full-time people has been challenging since we began to implement the reduction of staff. This had always been difficult, even when there were three or four persons on call. And so right now, we have a, a rotating system where the employees are responsible for specific days, and then we're trying to fill the gaps when those days aren't covered or they're not available. And, and once again, I must say, it is extremely difficult to be on call all the time. That, that's a huge burden for, for anybody, regardless of their family situation. So currently, what we're doing is the, the two incumbents have first dibs on the call-out. If they're unable to handle an after-hours call-out, our next stop is the clergy team, and the last stop is the ranking supervisor on duty.
Would, if we had two, because looking at the job description, I see a lot of it would be daytime-oriented work, just, you know, the advocacy, court, all of these things. Would one part-time person that was focused on after-hours on-call responsibilities, would that make it manageable? I want it to be manageable, so, we all want it to be manageable. Do you think that would, obviously it's more manageable, but would that be doable, do you think?
If, I, I would, I would like to suggest that the reason that Director Smith has the number of part-timers in her request that she does is to manage that. The, the, the police department staff did a quick survey this afternoon for the city manager regarding on what's going on in other jurisdictions. I think this is very valuable information, however, size does matter, volume does matter. We do more, actually, the victim advocates do more domestic violence work than those jurisdictions combined. And so we, we are going to need the, the number of people as laid out by Director Smith, or if, if we reverted back to the old way, we would need, again, to staff up to what we had full-time people to handle this. And once again, the difficulty in this issue this evening is, this is, this has been foisted on us by a dire economic situation. I didn't go to the city manager and say, "Well, one day I was thinking," that's not how this happened. The city manager came to me and says, "Chief, I need $600,000." And so we find ourselves in a difficult position, attempting to attend to the needs of the victims in the context of a $6 million mess. And I think Director Thomas has done an admirable job in figuring out what they do, how they do it, and how to staff it in this difficult situation. And further, with the two victim advocates that are here this evening, I've got nothing to good things to say about them, about their professionalism and their performance in these tasks, but what brings us here tonight is not them or their performance, it's our financial standing. And in that context of the financial standing, Director Smith has cobbled together a, a reasonable plan to address that issue.
Great, thank you. Alderman Rainey?
And I think Director Thomas deserves a medal, and I don't know how she does everything that she does, nor do I know how the victim services people do what they do. The, the one missing link here, and I am, I'm really a little disappointed, and that is, where has the YWA, YWCA been in this? I, I know that they came a couple of weeks ago and made a statement that made me think everything was going to be okay. Are they going, have you had communications with them? Are they going to step up and help out? Because they certainly are in the domestic violence business. And we certainly do need some support from our community members, especially those who are doing pretty well in the grants business these days.
Sure. So as you mentioned, Karen Singer did come to the budget presentation that was offered on Saturday, and we have, we met prior to my vacation, and she very much has been instrumental in attempting to move forward with this possible proposal. Her staff will provide some of the training, because we look to them as the experts in the domestic violence area, and we know that a large amount of time and commitment is in the domestic violence intervention world, so we will look to them as our partner. And I'd say roughly maybe 65, 70% of the bulk of the work is around domestic violence intervention and perpetrator training, but we don't want to forget the other components like death notification and tragic loss that some of our residents experience as well. So yes, she has, her entire department, under her leadership, has stepped up, said they would be a collaborative partner, and we're still talking and strategizing about what that will look like.
Well, this one has got me training. We're already in the government, so we have that covered, so.
Sure. And also, I just want to also remind the council that our hope is that the job descriptions that you were presenting, they will not work in isolation. We currently have four licensed clinical social workers on staff that work in our human services division, so there will be some complimentary support offered to the manager and the part-time staff that's proposed in the budget. So our hope is that none of these entities will work in silo, but they will work in complement of, with some of the human services components that they're working with now.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Just trying to make sure I understand, I, I think I understand the needs, but I want to understand the operational needs from, from your perspective. It, it sounds like one of the things you do feel like you need is a coordinator, so a person who coordinates the operation of the services. And obviously, that's the full-time person you've suggested. So what I wonder, and, but I'm concerned about the, you know, the on-call situation, obviously, with just the two people that are trying to cover all that. So what I, and I'm just bouncing stuff off, so it might be a terrible idea or not, but if we had the full-time coordinator, a second full-time position, and a part-time to help provide relief for that on-call situation, situations, that would relieve the burden, maybe relieve, reduce the on-call for the two full-time staff by 30-ish percent or maybe even more if the part-time was devoted to, to on-call. Would, would that kind of structure maybe work, or is that a bad idea?
So if I understand you correctly, you're saying two full-time and one part-time person?
Right. Obviously, one of the full-time would have to be the coordinator, because that, that's something that you need. So coordinator, another full-time person. Again, just kind of hearing what some of these needs, a lot of the work is, you know, a resource that people can go to during the day. But obviously, there is a significant need, because emergencies don't just happen during the day.
Correct.
But we can't expect two people to just, you know, cover, you know, it's like a doctor's office, you don't have just two doctors on call at the hospital.
You know, what, I guess what I propose is the one full-time person and three part-time to work throughout the seven-day period. Could it work with two full-time and one part-time? I, I think it could. My challenge is, I want to offer this as a possibility and then have the opportunity to revisit it if it doesn't work, because at the end of the day, we want this to work for the community.
Right.
And so I don't want to, I'm not married to, I, I think there needs to be a full-time person to coordinate it, and I think there needs to be additional staff to support it. What that looks like in terms of the volume, I propose the three, but could two part, full-time and one part-time? We can try that, I mean, but I, I just want to make sure that it's a successful support to the community.
Right, and hopefully, anything we do, always, if it doesn't work, we want to know it's not working, right? Whether it's this or the streets or anything, so, you know, if, if, if I've had a bad idea or we've had, you know, ill-advised decision, we want to know about it as soon as possible.
Sure.
I think we'd be interested in knowing if there's a, what the budget implication is of that. I mean, overall, it's the same, it's still 2.5, but you got two full-time, one half-time.
And we would have to create, I think, a new position. So we have, we have the full-time position that's in your packet, we have the part-time position that's in your packet. We would need to create another full-time position, because that would not be the same position as the two incumbents have. So we could, we could...
We'd have to reconfigure those numbers.
I'm sorry?
We'd have to reconfigure the financial impact of that.
Right, so I, so I think that there, there would be a, the range, Ms. Dorley, of the, of the first position, I think we had it on the screen, the, the full-time position is we've contemplated, sort of the supervisor. What's the sound?
That position is budgeted between $75,000 and $85,000 a year.
And the current incumbents, what's the range for the current incumbents?
Roughly the same.
Okay.
But I also wanted to mention that the hours coverage that we use, the calculation, we had the full-time person at 37.5 hours a week, which is the standard, and the part-time, three part-time people at 28 hours a week. That's approximately 125 hours a week of coverage. With two full-time and one part-time, that would be 108 hours, so 15-ish less hours if we went with that option.
Okay, thank, thank you.
So, but we would have to come up, because I think certainly if we had a supervisor position at the salary, we would need to come up with another classification that was a click or two below that.
Correct.
For, for the other full-time position.
We'd need a little bit more time to run the numbers, but if we're going to talk two full-time versus one full-time and three part-time, we would also add, add additional taxes and insurance coverage for that other full-time employee.
All right, so...
Which may increase the cost, but not the coverage.
Correct.
Right, I think, and that's your point, is that right now, right now with this, we would probably have 15 hours more a week or a pay period, which is it?
I thought she said 20.
Per week.
20 per week or 15, I'm sorry?
15 per week.
15 per week, so, so we would, we would be reducing with the proposal that Alderman Wilson has come up with, and it's reduction of 15 hours a week of coverage.
Correct.
And, and, and costs more.
Okay, well, maybe that doesn't sound as good as it did when I said it.
All right, we got lots of lights here. Alderman Fleming? Okay. Alderman Ru Simmons?
Thank you. So I'm concerned about the community, and these calls are going out when our residents are dealing with the most vulnerable times that they'll probably ever experience. And relationships, it seems, are important in this area. And so I understand that one of the current employees has a relationship to the community and actually returned back here to take her current job, and so I'm wondering... And so, I'm wondering how we can keep that position intact and maybe restructure around that, because she seems to be important to the community.
Well, Alderman Ruth Simmons, members of the council, we would have a full-time position for anyone to apply for, so the two incumbents could do that. I think it's very difficult, and the Mr. DiAgostino discussion, I think, is a good example. It's very difficult to craft positions around individuals. I mean, as much as, you know, people provide service to the community, which is extraordinarily valued, from a budget perspective, and as your city manager, it's very difficult for me to kind of back in based on an incumbent. I think that we have a full-time position, the incumbents are welcome to apply for that. Certainly, if they have good skills and abilities, great skills and abilities, they'll be very competitive for that. And I think that's a challenge always with the budget, is how do you craft positions that are based on skills and abilities and not necessarily keeping any one individual in mind for that? So, you have our commitment, and I think Director Thomas Smith has done an excellent job over the last several weeks of describing what we're trying to accomplish here. And I think it's really up to all of you to decide if this makes sense or not. Again, we're trying to also balance a budget. We clearly and rightfully provide tremendous resources in this area compared to all of our neighbor communities. I mean, it's almost embarrassing that our neighbor communities can get away, even with a smaller size and with less complexity with the way they deal with the service. So, we're very proud to do that. And I think, as Ms. Dorley mentioned, the number of hours a week that would be available is still pretty impressive, but ultimately, it's your all decision.
Thank you, Mr. Ralph Witz. Alderman Suffertin?
One of the, I got a lot of emails about this, and one of them had to do with forensic interviews for child sexual abuse victims. Can you help me understand what would be different about how we would approach those going forward than how we approach them now? And it might be more of a chief question.
Okay.
Alderman Suffertin, members of the dais, those interviews now are currently farmed out to specialists, and we make appointments for those. They're not handled either by victim services or our police officers alone. And so, that's something that is in progress now and will not be impacted on by this particular change.
Is there a victim advocate involved at all in that, or they just coordinate the appointment?
No, no, the officers coordinate the appointment. Advocates still advocate for those victims regardless of age, but we're not involved, we're not directly involved in the interview process. Quickly, the interviewing of very young victims is extremely difficult, extremely complex, very easy to lead and plant ideas, so you have to be very experienced at conducting those interviews, and we farm that out to a specialized unit.
Okay. So, there's no victim advocate involved in that?
No, not in the interview. Being victim advocate, yes, but not in the interview.
And that wouldn't change under what we're talking about?
The interview itself would not change. And the advocacy, by whatever form or format is decided on by the council tonight, would still attempt to replicate the support that we provide now. Did I get where...
No, I get, you know, the email that I got that has me concerned is from the Children's Advocacy Center, and they were talking about the role that our people play. I understand that we don't conduct the interview, but, you know, I hate to think like something, and I get the situation we're all in, it's, I hate to think something that important is subject to budget, and I also understand reality. But I guess what I really want to understand is what we would do going forward in situations like that, and if that would be consistent with the values of the city of Evanston.
I would defer that to Director Thomas, but the interview itself, that would remain unchanged. The support would, I will leave, the future support I would leave to Director Thomas and her plans. I can talk about what we do now.
Could you give me an idea on the number of cases that we'd be talking about?
It varies. We've gone as many as 15 in a year, we've gone as low as two. It's a very cyclic thing, and unfortunately, a lot of these cases are extremely complex, and it's a family member, and then there's multiple victims inside the family, and so when you have one of those, the numbers creep up significantly versus other single events.
Great, thank you. Alderman Winn?
Yes. Director Thomas Smith?
Yes.
When we're, look, if we went with the proposal of three part-time staff people, what is the marketplace like for finding someone, finding appropriately skilled folks to do that, to take that position? And then, my other question would be, because we want to provide, make sure we have continuity with the citizens of Evanston, how do we make sure we don't get a lot of turnover in a part-time position?
The latter part of that question, I don't know if I can answer that, but what I can tell you is that we have relationships with the School of Social Work now. Because of our relationship with President's Behavioral Health, we had interns, social worker interns that worked out of the library. We would have anywhere between four and six each year, and because we've moved to a model where there's a full-time social worker at the library now, that social worker is a preceptor for the interns that actually support some of the initiatives through the library. So, we have relationships with the University of Illinois Jane Addams School of Social Work, and we have relationships with DePaul University. We are their host site for their social worker interns. So, from the number and volume of social workers that I've worked with and experienced over the last two or three years, I think the marketplace is highly competitive. I think there are graduate-level students that are struggling for employment, so I don't think we'll have a difficult time having applicants. The challenge that we'll have to really vet is making sure they understand the culture of Evanston, and making sure that they're culturally and linguistically sensitive, because it's not just the scope of social work we're looking at, it's the scope of social work that's sensitive to our community. And so, the hope is that, you know, as competitive as this market is, I hope that we get some Evanston residents that apply that can kind of, you know, make sure that we're addressing the culture of our community.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. So, Alderman Fleming, you had the motion to go with two. Why don't you take the floor for a second?
Well, so, yes, my motion was to go with two, however, I, you know, I guess I've been convinced that two is not enough to cover our 24-hour cycle. However, I am struck also by what the chief said, which is when we had four, it was still a struggle to cover the cycle, so probably covering the overnight cycle is maybe more of a management thing, if we had four full-time and it was a struggle. So, being that, I do want that to be covered, I do still have some concerns based on the way the job description currently reads, that it just, and comparing it with the old one, and comparing it with people in the community perceive this position and the importance of this position, that I would like to know that it has more of that community feel to it, just that it lays out very clearly the responsibility is that you, you know, are advocating for the victim, whatever time of day that is, what that looks like. I think, given the kind of particulars of Evanston and the community, you know, having that community relationship is good. And I just, and I say that because when someone applies for this job, I want them to really know that this is what the job is. You know, I don't want us to have kind of a, you know, wasting your time, and I don't want us to have an influx of people who really, to the best of our ability, based on what we advertise the job to be, that aren't really clear on what that is. I do have some concerns about that continuum if we go this route in changing staff. It takes a long time to develop relationships, and so I have, and because the perception in the community is one of which, you know, the people look at this budget, and they call me, and they feel like we're cutting all of the services to vulnerable people, you know, the Levy Center, this population, you know, other things. And so, I think we have to be very, very mindful about that, and what this looks like, and very clear with the job description, very clear with any transition plan. And even though the people who are there and here now can apply, they're both full-time, but there's only one full-time position, and they're not guaranteed that position. So, and I don't know if either one of them would be interested in working, going from 40 hours a week to going to 28 hours a week. So, I think we should probably be realistic that we might lose the two we have, and what impact is that going to have in people actually, you know, utilizing the service if they don't know the person, if they're not comfortable, so on and so forth. And speaking to Alderman Holmes, I called her about this, and I know that that was a thing that she said she and Alderman Braithwaite really advocated for was clinicians and such who really understood our community, so that I think I would just have more confidence in this if the job description really spoke more about kind of the softer skills and not as heavy, particularly for the three part-time people with the kind of more administrative stuff.
And we can make that, those changes, Alderman. I think the Director Thomas Smith and I don't disagree with anything you've said. I think, you know, we've tried to be thoughtful and to hear the council's concerns, and certainly we can make those changes, and we'll circulate that to the council before we go out for the positions.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I think that then helps us to move forward with this, Alderman Fleming. Right. I just want to make a clarification, because I think you've done an excellent job articulating this to where we're all, everyone behind the dais feels the same concern for the same population. I just want to make sure that we're moving forward, because we're now talking about two separate things. So, the moving around of staff is now off the table, and then you'll continue to work with staff to, I think we all will, to clarify the position so that it's exactly what our community wants. And I think, from what I hear from the director, who, again, has an excellent track record, if we need to make an adjustment, we'll make an adjustment, especially given something that we're all paying attention to. So, I just want clarification for you. You started with a motion, it was...
Right, I just started with a motion, so I can remove the motion.
So, you're withdrawing your motion?
I am, because two people, if it's not realistic to serve our population, I don't want to set this up for that. I am not going to make a motion, though, to move what we have in front of us, because I would like to see the job descriptions more clearly, and I still have some concerns. So, if anyone else wants to make that motion, that is...
Which is fine. And again, I just, because so many people are paying attention to this, I think it's something that we're all going to have to continue to educate our public. I mean, the scary thing is there are people who think that we're completely moving away and not eliminating all the positions, which isn't true. So, I just, and for those that are here, and for those that are paying attention, and will watch it later, we want to make sure that we answer the budget question, which we did, and that we'll pay attention to the job description, since you did a wonderful job of bringing it up as an issue. Right?
I guess I'm not sure what you're asking me. I would like to see new job descriptions. I am not, I am not going to make a motion to move forward on what's in front of me.
Okay.
Would someone like to make a motion to move, so, again, just for our budget process here tonight?
I'll move the, I will move the proposal as stated in our packet.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, let's do a quick roll on that, see where we are.
Turn your mic on. Turn your mic on. You're talking about the three?
Talking about the full-time and the three-part-time.
Right.
As proposed.
As proposed.
As proposed. We had a motion and a second on that. Can we go ahead and take a roll?
Alderman Suffertin?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Winn?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. So, that failed to pass, four to five. Okay. Meaning the proposal that the city manager has put forward in this proposed budget of reducing it from four full-time to one full-time and three and a half part-time did not pass. So, what direction do we, are we going to give our city manager for the budget? Alderman Wilson, I know you had your light on, and then I'll go to Alderman Rainey.
And I'm still just kind of trying to think it through. I know we need to save money, so I'm cognizant of that. And I know that we've already made a decision to keep the one position that's, you know, we've got the 680, which reflects four full-time and a half-time, but there's a position that's been retained in another category.
That's correct.
So, and there that is, so that's the 92,000. And, I don't know, I'm not comfortable for all the reasons I just stated before. I feel like more full-time daytime help would be useful. I don't know if the math is, if there's really any significant savings if it were two full-time, two part-time, if that's useful money-wise. I can't do the math, you know, and I don't know what that would be off the top of my head, so...
Alderman Rainey?
I would like to know if the two full-time, the current two full-time people are ever called in overnight for any emergency situation?
I think the chief just said that they're the ones that are covering it, yeah.
Pardon me?
Yeah, they're the ones that are doing it now. They're the first ones that get called.
They're the first ones that get called, and then if there's someone on duty, they will come in.
But if they can't, then he went through the hierarchy before. But it sounds like there are a number of times when, with just two people to pick from, again, it's like my hospital example, you don't want just two doctors.
What I would like to do is, I would like us to support maintaining two full-time and asking our staff to perhaps confer with the YWCA and, you know, with our resources of interns, and see if we can't, and I'm not going to use the word cobble together, because I don't like the implications of that, but to put together other support staff for on-call evening. I think we can do that. I just cannot see, I can't see going with the one full-time and three part-time, that's not going to work.
Well, and then I think...
And I think the community doesn't want it either, and it's not going to work.
Well, I think with the, when I suggested the two full-time and one part-time, the response was that we would actually have less coverage.
And that it would cost more.
And it would cost more. So, I think the two full-time, I understand what you're saying, look to the community partners, but I don't think, you know, putting them into the on-call queue isn't necessarily going to be that reliable.
Mr. Ralph Witz?
Director Thomas Smith and Ms. Dorley are conferring at this point. I think if we come up with a, we go with two full-time positions and a different mix of part-time, and I don't know if they've just come up with that or not there, that we would have one of the full-time position as is currently described in the proposed budget, we would have a second full-time position that would not have the supervision responsibilities, and then have three part-time positions, two of which would be the, and Erica, you were contemplating how many hours a week?
For the part-time was 28 hours per week.
Okay. So, if we went with two at 28 hours a week, and then a third with something less than that, that would probably be just for covering on-call, we need to figure out how much that would cost, but I think that addresses the concerns I'm hearing from the council.
I don't think you're saying two full-time and then three part-time also. That's not what I'm saying. Then we're not saving anything, right? Then we're spending...
Well, we are saving. I think we just have to figure out to what extent we are saving, because I think we need at least, we need at least two part-time on some level, some number of hours in order to cover the on-call piece. So, if you had the two full-time, and at a different pay scale than the current incumbents, so there's some savings there, and then have some mix of part-time hours that probably could serve the needs that the council's identifying.
So, maybe two full-time and two part-time?
Or some bucket of part-time hours, and I think we'd have to figure out what the FTE is with that.
Correct. The savings right now that is proposed is approximately $300,000. If we did add in a second full-time, that would probably be budgeted somewhere in the 85 to 95 all-in with insurance, taxes, et cetera. So, you're looking at dropping that savings to 200 versus 300 if we were to keep the three full-time, which I would say we would still be concerned with that hours coverage, and we would still want that flexibility that those three part-timers would provide. So, the proposal as it stands of two full-time, three part-time could work a little bit easier with approximately 100,000 less in savings.
Do we, do we have time to make, I mean, can we wait on this decision? I mean, I think it's all-important to us all, and I would hate to make a half-informed decision. So, if it makes sense to hold this particular part, and then come back until we get the right, I think coverage is the priority, and then to understand the full all-in cost would, I would feel more comfortable voting.
I would suggest there should be some placeholder here. I mean, again, we're trying to go through the entire budget tonight, so if we're not going to get a, you know, $300,000 savings or whatever it was, then put a placeholder and say, "Okay, it's going to be 200,000." They can do the math and...
Placeholders are important.
So, I think we take 100,000 off, and we'll come back at your meeting. So I think we take 100,000 off and, and we'll come back at your meeting on the 27th.
Thank you.
Just so we can try to continue to land the plane.
Thank you.
All right, good. Any other discussions about the proposed budget adjustments?
Where does that take us, Alex? 480.
All right. Alderman Rainey?
I, I don't know whether it's necessary or not, but I want to advocate for the 20-cent rideshare tax. And I just want to make a few comments. I've gotten lots of messages from constituents, which I'm surprised about, as well as the Uber and Lyft people. First of all, Uber and Lyft are multi-billion dollar companies. For that guy to come here tonight and tell us what a burden it is going to be to his organization and to his people was absolutely insulting. And how much money they spread around the city of Chicago, I don't know anything about that, but I, I don't remember receiving anything. Do you all?
No.
If he'd like to spread around some money to the city of Evanston, I think we'd all be very, very thankful.
Yeah, we'll take it.
However, however, to Mr. Robinson who spoke tonight, one of the reasons we're asking for 20 cents is so that people like the Robinson family and domestic violence victims, et cetera, can, can have services. It's going to generate $100,000, $100,020. I use, I use rideshare all the time. I am not going to stop tipping rideshare drivers. I've never used Lyft and I might never use Lyft now after listening to that. But this 20 cents, believe me, and the drivers have had this beaten into their head by the, by the companies, that this is going to kill their business. This is not going to kill your business. This is not going to kill your business. So I found that really offensive, that that guy came tonight and said that. And they're sending letters to their drivers and it's just appalling. But the 20 cents is a very simple tax and hopefully everybody will vote for it.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Okay. All right. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to get to a bunch of ordinances where we're going to have discussion and votes.
There's no reference to the clerk's budget or making an adjustment there?
I got that, I got that. So, any further discussion on budget adjustments?
One thing, is the clerk's budget that we got the memo on, is that in a spreadsheet here in the...
It is not.
It is not. I think we need to see, I need to see it in there. So if we could get that before we deal with it?
The handout that I provided has, has the budget broken down?
Has that been folded into, but I mean, in, on our...
We have not, city staff had not received it prior. We had know that the clerk was interested in, in additional $85,000 for his budget, but we had not received any other information.
Okay, but again, so if we can know what the difference is from what the suggested increase here and what his request is, the council can then consider it, right?
Well, there's a $7,300 decrease, he's asking for an $85,000 increase, so that's a net increase of $92,000.
From last year, it, baseline budget for last year was $312,000. This year's proposed budget is $191,000. That's not an increase from last year.
And again, we're, we're working from the city manager's proposed budget, so...
Okay. Alderman Wilson?
City manager is elected.
Well, I was just going to introduce the clerk's budget as an item for discussion. So, the difficulty I have with, with, with the additional position, of course, is the fact that we are still paying somebody in a different department who moved there and is actually doing that work. They're doing those, a lot of those tasks. So it seems to me that the positions, it's, the work is still getting done, it's just being done in a different department.
May I address that point?
Let's, let's do this, because it's yours. I want to go to the, go to the Alderman. If you want to flip on your light, I'll, I'll respect that and call on you when you're ready.
That's mine.
Okay. Alderman Fisk, did you have something or did you turn?
No, it was...
Okay, all right. Clerk Reed?
The, yes, the position has been moved over. There is a position, there is going to be a customer service representative position eliminated in the collector's office. Is that correct, city manager Bobkowitz? So there's an elimination in the collector's office of one position, and there is, as I mentioned, passports is slated to be eliminated next year, and I'd want to bring that back to my office. That brings in, this year, year-to-date was $28,000 worth of revenue. I suppose it'll be over 30,000 by the end of the year. My office is open until 7:00, so we could potentially increase the revenue, the passport revenue exponentially by a good factor, staying open until 7:00 as opposed to 4:30.
City mayor Jevalkis?
I'm sorry, nothing.
Okay. All right. Alderman Wilson?
Okay. I guess I'm still not hearing the need for the extra person, other than the passports. Passports are being done now, but if, I don't know that there's been an actual decision to eliminate it or not, one way or the other with certainty, but, you know, we're trying to cut, you know, we're all trying to cut, we're trying to cut positions, so the fact that we're eliminating the collector's position, you know, we're not trying to add positions. So do you not have enough people to do the work you have now?
So there is work that is mandated by our rules and code that traditionally hasn't been done by the clerk's office, that I believe should be done, and then also expanding into the realm of elections where we haven't done a lot of work on actually increasing voter participation in the city, which is fundamental to our democracy, but also a star community's criteria that we have not met yet. As far as the work that should be done by the clerk's office that isn't being done now and traditionally hasn't been done for all standing committees, it's in our rules that the clerk's office is responsible for keeping the records or maintaining all meeting, or all minutes for standing committees. The clerk's office has responsibilities with boards and commissions, and it seems like that hasn't been done prior to my taking office, which is notifying folks of their eligibility. Also, I want to have, move, transition the office into a bit more collecting analytics about civic participation. So one being, all legislation should be moving through the clerk's office. As, as I ran on, I would like to create a legislation tracker. It's a simple software upgrade. The staff in my office could handle moving legislation through and tracking and keeping the vote counts, which would make the process more transparent for community members, as well as doing more community engagement.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. Alderman Wilson?
Okay, and, and those are all, I think, laudable goals, but it's...
Fundamental to our democracy.
I generally don't disagree that participating in the electoral process is fundamental to democracy, but the other items, there are certain statutory things that the clerk is assigned to do pursuant to the state law, and then the council can ask the clerk to do other things, which historically has been the case. So I think that if, if we're going to make some policy changes as we go, that would be something to bring up. So, you know, you know, talk to us about, you know, changing what the clerk's role is, changing what the clerk is doing, changing some of those responsibilities. But in the absence of those policies actually having been adopted, to assume that you have the need for something that we haven't actually implemented, it just seems to me that that's ahead of the curve.
So there isn't a change? I'm simply looking to do what is already on paper for the office to do that hasn't been done in the past.
Well, you know, the clerk's office isn't required to actually take the minutes for all the boards and commissions. I think you're just supposed to keep the records.
Yeah, not for all the boards, specifically for the standing committees. So that's AP&amp;W, that's the Rules Committee, that's Human Services. So not every single committee, but all of these standing committees.
I don't think that's true.
I just think, I don't know that you actually are required...
Andrew Bobkowitz, you sent it an email to us.
What's that? I think that you're supposed to keep a record, so somebody, whoever keeps the minutes has to give them to you, and you keep a journal of those. I think it refers to a journal. You know, we're probably past the age of journals, but at this point now, we're doing it all electronically, so it goes on the website. So, you know, you don't actually have to literally keep a journal because it's there, so that serves as the journal. And all those boards and the standing committees, the minutes are all posted, so I think that satisfies that, that part of it. But nobody expects you to actually be at all those standing committees. That would be, you know, unreasonable expectation, I think.
I'm here, I'd be happy to be here. I'm here either way, and it'd actually be a savings in staff time because we wouldn't have to have a, a staff member here.
Okay. Well, again, that would be a policy change.
All right, let's go, we got some, some other folks that want to chime in here. Alderman Rainey?
I was just going to make a comment. Please, please don't take the minutes at the other meetings. Everything's under control. We, you know, it's not that I don't want change, but we never have any needs for corrections. Everything works out fine. Nobody in all these years, no, no city clerk has ever taken the minutes of standing committees. Your job is to be here, to be here at the council meeting.
All right, thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Suffertin?
Sure. I was just going to say, in light of a lot of the difficult decisions that we're going to make tonight, I think we need to figure out a way to accomplish your office's goals in the most lean manner possible, and it makes it difficult to advocate for an increase in your budget right now. I don't know...
It's not increasing. It's, it's from the 2017 level.
We're just, Clerk Reed, we're just, again, we're using this as the baseline right here in terms of the city manager's budget.
I do think, like, you know, we do have a, an election next year, and I think that it is reasonable that your office would have some expenses around that that maybe we can map out and try and plan for. But it's just really hard to figure out a way, with the way that we're working here, to support it. And I, and I don't want you to think that that means I don't support the objectives you have for your office, but it's, we're all kind of faced with this reality here. We've got to make these numbers balance.
Okay, so seeing no more lights. Do we have a, a motion to, to move the clerk's request? All right. Any other conversations that people want to have on the budget adjustments? If not, we're going to move on to the next. Alderman Fisk?
I just wanted an opportunity to talk about the library and ask a question.
Excuse me, Alderman Fisk?
About the library?
Yes, I mean, there are capital issues. The library has a levy request before the council.
Yes.
Director Nancy Lyons is here. She'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Hagerty, Clerk Reed, members of the council, Molly Bobkowitz and Karen Danzig Lyons, your library director, how can I help?
Karen, thank you so much for coming, and I'm just wondering if in the, the costs for improvements that you're wanting to do, is there, is there any, any flexibility in there at all? Is there, do we have to do everything all at once? Is there, I remember the conversation from last time, but is there any room at all for, for lack of a better word, negotiation?
The renovation of the main library as proposed would spill over to another budget year. It's an 18-month project to do the construction. Were we just start and stop, then there would be additional costs, so the budget, the cost would go up. Quite a bit of the, the cost in the project has to do with aging infrastructure around fiber runs and electricity. We can, if, with your support of, of the notion of proceeding with the project, we can of course work with the architect and look to see if there are ways to save costs. But I don't want you to be misled to suggest that a $9 million project over 18 months could, could reduce by a third or by a half and accomplish what we're proposing to do in terms of the project. And again, if we start and then stop and come back in a couple of years, then there's going to be additional costs because of construction escalation and additional costs to mobilize onto the site. So it's just a question of, of how we pay for it and how we proceed.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking, is there, is there a way to get the infrastructure done and the wiring and all of that that we need to do that's critical to your moving ahead and put off, and I'm just using this as an example, furniture purchase? Is there, is, is there any room at all that you can see for us to reduce the cost of the project?
We are looking to reuse as much of the furniture as we can. We've also, in, in looking at the project, I'll be taking stock, carpeting stock, which was purchased 23 years ago, which is still in fairly decent shape, that's been in storage, and we'll be using that as part of the carpeting. So I'm trying to find ways to economize in any way we can, and with your support, we would then come back after we go out for bids to see where we come in with the, with the project. But I understand the tension between wanting to proceed with the project and looking for ways to economize, and I will continue to work with the architect to do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Alderman Suffertin?
Sure. Karen, I just wanted to say, I agree with a lot of things that Judy said, but I also think you're to be commended for being forward-thinking on this.
Oh, thank you.
We, we end up with a lot of deferred maintenance, and I do think that even though the timing is lousy, like, it's important to maintain city assets as we go rather than do it under catastrophic circumstances later. But I also agree with a lot of what Judy said.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other discussions under proposed budget adjustments? This could include the capital budget as well.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we've not, I, I think we're at the conclusion of the operating budget then. We'll come back next week with an additional proposal on the victim services. We've not talked a lot about the capital budget. The capital budget, I think, as you know from the initial presentation Mr. Lyons made several weeks ago, is over the city council's approved debt limit for capital projects. This is because of the costs associated with the library proposal. It is associated with the initial funding for Robert Crown, as well as our, our regular general obligation bonding costs. As part of a request, there's a budget memorandum from me detailing $3 million of reductions in the general operation, general obligation bond capital budget. That $3 million decrease would not take us below that cap. That cap is, if you choose to go forward with Crown and with the library, that will exceed the cap. What the $3 million does is basically keeps us even on what I'll refer to as sort of the general, general obligation bond capital projects. And certainly, the cuts that are included there are, are significant. There are programs, there's funding for, I think as Alderman Fleming pointed out, traffic calming, there's money for, street repair is reduced, and staff has put that up on the screen in yellow. I just want to make sure before we leave here tonight, if you are comfortable moving forward with what the, what the library's proposed, the Robert Crown and the capital budget is presented, then fine, we'll move forward and prepare documents for your approval accordingly. If not, again, I have put forward $3 million in reductions on general obligation funding. The needs for capital investment in this community are significant. The need to be solvent is also significant. The need to ensure that our, our capital debt does not increase beyond our ability to pay it is also significant. So, so clearly, these are competing interests. But Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before we left the item this evening, I wanted to at least get some confirmation from the council as to where they sit with the capital budget.
Thank you, city manager. Alderman Braithwaite?
So I'm looking at the Main Street Maple to...
Okay, we'll go with Alderman Fleming and Alderman Braithwaite.
No, I just, I was, I was raising the, the Main Street Maple to Main, the design portion to be removed, so it isn't in my ward, but I think of all the streets, we've had internal conversations with our staff that Main Street, Main Street needs to be addressed and addressed in a whole... holistic way. So I was just trying to understand the justification for removing that.
Yeah, that's my question, too.
And, and I will take responsibility. Everything in yellow is my decision, and so I will, I will, we'll take that responsibility. And looking to come up with $3 million, which was the dollar amount that would be necessary to reduce to keep us even with our, our general capital obligation, that project has not yet begun. And so to delay it at least a year, given the other projects that are already in, in the mix there, I thought was important. And again, we can look through, you know, the Howard Street corridor, Dodge to Custer has gone through some additional visioning work. There's been an additional scope identified through those discussions that's above $103,000 in addition to the original scope for that project. Other issues as we go through there. Again, if the council wishes to move forward with these projects, that's perfectly fine. I have no, I'm not going to sit here and argue against that. I merely am raising the issue that the capital costs are significant. We are going to surpass the council's adopted debt limit. You can set a new debt limit, but I did not want this evening to go by without at least pointing this out.
Thank, thank you.
May I follow up to that?
Sure, Alderman Win.
Well, I'd like to have an explanation of what the, can we go back to, removing the $380,000 for the design engineering phase, but we're still leaving in the Main Street Commons Corridor Engineering Services? So I know it's a complicated project, but what, what are we doing then if we're removing the design engineering phase but we're continuing with engineering service and, and construction?
Well, the Main Street Commons Corridor project is, is at least a year ahead
Oh, excuse me.
In discussions.
I'm getting them mixed up.
Yeah, there have been community meetings, and I, and I
That's fine.
And money has been spent, Ms. Biggs, how much money have we approximately spent on engineering services on?
City manager, Mr. City Manager, I was getting them mixed up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I, I do understand, but what I'd like to find out then is what can we do? Because I think there are at least three aldermen who have gotten complaints continuously about Main Street, about the surface of Main Street. And so if we have to delay that, what more can we do to, can we do more of that, the patching that we've done, that we did on Chicago Avenue that was fairly successful?
Well, the, the $380,000 is the first steps of a very large project.
Yes, I'm aware of that. But I want to know, if we put that off for a year or two, then what do we do to make sure that we still have a road surface on Main Street between Ridge and Hinman? Because we won't have a road service, surface much longer.
And, and Alderman Win, members of the council, let me reiterate that I, all of these cuts are proposed to you in order to balance the spending issue. I mean, you'll also see that we're, I'm proposing to cut the street patching program in half. And that's a citywide dollar amount, $600,000, which I think most people would say is a small amount of money citywide to start, let alone reducing it by 300. So if the council is comfortable with the increase in capital spending, then I withdraw these proposals. If you are not comfortable and you feel we need to be spending less, I was asked to come up with, well, if we're gonna spend less, what would you propose, Mr. City Manager, we don't spend it on? And so that is the, the spirit in which this $3 million of reduction is, is listed. Nothing on the original capital budget I would call as fluff, nothing I would call as something we don't need. Everything that was on your original proposed budget is significant for this community. But my challenge and my obligation to you is to at least point out the significant issues of capital spending and capital debt that we have.
Can you describe the implications if we kept the $3 million in?
If we kept the $3 million in, and I'll ask Mr. Lyons to help, because we were, we, we chatted about this very point earlier this, this afternoon, is that the, the cut of that $3 million plus the abatements that we already have budgeted would leave our general capital debt even. We will, it would not decrease, it would not increase. So with this $3 million, and, and obviously, the general obligation bond spending is in excess of $3 million, but if this $3 million is left in, then our net contribution to our debt, general obligation debt grows by $3 million.
And the tax levy is $2,000 to $250,000 a year for 20 years to pay that $3 million. So we talked about the $446,000 that we had to adjust this year because all the fund balances in the debt service, those are all, we've, we've tried to be as efficient as we can. So this, this is a backdoor way of, if you kept it as a transfer and raised that transfer by $250,000 next year, then you're gonna cut operating costs somehow or raise operating revenues and send that money as an abated amount for handling the projects. It won't go on the tax levy, but it will be an impact to the general fund next year. Every capital decision we make this year usually has an operating impact next year when we figure out the debt service levy. So $2,000 to $250,000 is the, the tax levy quote unquote impact for the $3 million.
Thank you.
All right, Alderman Rainey?
Marty, our city manager, I can't find the page right now, but what part of the Howard Street project are you cutting out? That's the project that we're getting $2 million for from the state.
I believe it's outside the TIF, but I will.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not in the TIF. Well, it travels into the TIF, but.
The Howard Street project has an original scope that was decided, and then there are two things that are in addition. One is the limits of the project were extended, two blocks on the west and one block on the east, and lighting was not really part of the original project, and the lighting is extra also.
All right, so what are we taking out of it? I can't, I don't have the page.
So the extended scope is defined as what precisely?
Well, we, it was from Dodge to Custer.
The extended scope is, it's from Dodge to Custer is the initial scope.
Right.
So Hartree to Dodge on the west.
And you know who did that? I mean, we had, we did not recommend that.
So staff has been working to coordinate this project with the City of Chicago, which is also using STP, Surface Transportation Program grant funding, to do their portion of the project. And so it's hard at this point for me to say who recommended what in the discussions, but that is an extension.
But what, but taking a hit on this, how is that going? I mean, we really don't, I wish we could sit and talk about this because we don't really need to do anything between Hartree and Dodge. I, I don't think that area needs anything. Lovely condos and rentals, and it looks really nice. It's a little boring, but it doesn't need anything, really. Maybe some new trees, I don't know. But, I mean, I, I don't, how are we gonna handle that, seeing that we're working with the other side?
If this were removed, we would have to go back and negotiate with them about the scope.
But couldn't they do their side and we just not do anything on?
Yes, I'm sure that could be done.
Is this gonna delay the project?
The project is already basically slated for 2020.
No.
No, it was originally slated for 2019, but in working with the City of Chicago, that is when their funding becomes available. They did not get the funding in the same timeframe that we got the funding.
I mean, it's, all right, we'll talk.
Alderman Fleming?
So I, I will, I have some problems with the new proposal. I understand we have to save $3 million, but I look at some of these things and I have concerns, and I guess so I would say that I would ask the library to defer the non-essential kind of safety, infrastructure parts of their project until the city's just in a better financial place. I mean, we have a commitment to Robert Crown, which will give us a beautiful library space. I know the Central Street Library has been recently remodeled, and so, you know, we have that library space. I can't remember where, but in the budget, there was some talk about a bookmobile or something, I think. So I would say that I would ask, or I would support for the library to do wiring and such and not the full scope of their work, given that we are looking to cut lots of money. And I know things like, sorry, I'm looking at my paper here, so things like the Shore School Park expansion, you know, I, my heart is in the fifth ward, and to have another building potentially sitting there abandoned for a number of years troubles me. Plus, that's a major way of people coming into our city, so I think if we can do some work there. The tuck pointing at the service center, maybe not imperative now, but we just talked last year, earlier this year, about the service center kind of falling in on itself, for lack of a better term. So I'm concerned about not doing needed work over there. You know, there are just several things on here that I think in the long run might cost us more if we don't take care of now. And the library, I understand it's 25 years old, but when I think of us, you know, needing to do electrical and HVAC at some of our buildings that are much older than that, I would just ask them to, to delay their major construction, let us get through Robert Crown in, in a tough budget year, and, and do what's needed right now to bring that cost down so that we can actually put some more money into our capital improvements. Because I don't know that we're gonna have more money next year for these capital improvement projects, yet our buildings are gonna continue to deteriorate in our streets and so on and so forth. So that is my opinion and suggestion.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. Alderman Saffron identified, I guess, one of our critical points here, and that is just the, the plague of deferred maintenance that we have. And a lot of this stuff is, is to try to catch up on that. Mr. Lyons, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have laid you down. But, but generally speaking, there's a slide that we saw a couple or a few weeks ago on our, how much we brought our, our non-pension debt down. I seem to remember the number was somewhere in the neighborhood of $90-plus million. Is that correct in 10 years?
Yes, we've gone from $298 million down to $199 million. That's all non-pension debt, whether it's abated or not.
Right. And so the city manager inadvertently used the word comfortable. I don't think any of us are comfortable with a lot of this, so it's, it's very uncomfortable. I'm also uncomfortable with the idea that around the time I started, we had pension debt on the books for something, it was tens of millions, and then the reality was it was hundreds of millions. So, you know, that's, that's the, that's, that's the environment that we all have to operate in, and a lot of that's been governed by what the state has imposed on us. So, and I have a hard time explaining, you know, car stickers are due. My friends are mad at me. They're all mad at me. Car stickers are stupid. Why would we have to pay for this? And then, you know, do you know how much it costs to pave one block of street? No, of course, people have absolutely no idea. But this is my really, really long-winded way of saying, with the exception of maybe a handful of these studies that could probably wait, my inclination is, is to just, you know, bump that limit up a little bit. We have these maintenance needs, we have these capital improvement needs. We should continue to be aggressive in trying to bring down the debt, but at the same time, we've seen time after time, those of us who've been here for, for the eight or four years, things end up costing more. You know, if, I see the tuck pointing. If, if, if the water starts to infiltrate, it goes from being this to being a really much more significant number. You know, not to pick on the tuck pointing, but that's my inclination. So a little bit of a point-blank question, if we don't take out this $3 million, I don't get the impression that that's gonna really be a serious threat to our bond rating, for example? Or am I wrong about that?
I can't guess what Moody's or Fitch would do, but no, I don't think it would be tremendous impact. It's the whole mix. For instance, all the hard work you're doing tonight on having a general fund, fund balance going back up to your minimum balance requirement of 16%, that's noted by them. The continued funding of pensions at the right level is noted, so it's all a mix. Now, the, the only place where Moody's and Fitch differs with most common sense, they'll go into the paper, sorry, but differs with most common sense approaches is they don't, they would rather us tax for our bonds than abate for them. Whereas you all would say, I'd rather find other revenue sources to pay our bonds, whether it's a gas tax because the people who are using the streets are paying for it, or a parking fee. So that's what I think is the future for the, the council is to consider. It's not the overall debt that's concerning, it's the debt that is on the property. So to the extent that we can continue to move forward with debt that is abated from other sources, that's one of those things that we can continue to look at in a five-year capital planning process. So, you know, going back to the $3 million, if we could find $250,000 in the general fund next year as an abated amount, that pays for it. It's not a tax levy increase. But you know what that process was like this year? But the city manager proposed $4 million plus in cuts, and that was not easy to do. We're talking about much lesser amount to try and right the capital ship on an annual basis. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, and, and we have a number of commitments that we're, we're living up to. We're getting the, the water mains done, so it, it's painful, so there are sacrifices. The sidewalks don't get done, we'll get the water mains done. So, so these really important things, our community center, you know, it, it's not gonna fall in on itself soon, but the equipment that keeps the ice frozen and, you know, there are cracks in the ceiling, and when they have the events, water pours into buckets. So, yeah, it's not falling down today, but it, that's, it's not appropriate to, to run an organization like that. So these are, these are important needs, and they're all imminent. So I, that's, that's my thought. We should just go ahead and, you know, you know, tough it out, so.
City Manager, if we were to do that, or, or, Mr. Lyons, if we were to do that, what does that mean for the 2018 budget, though, in terms of additional increase either, you know, in cuts or revenue that we need?
Absolutely nothing for the 2018.
None for this year, but for the following. For 2019, it will mean additional cuts or increases in fees or taxes.
That's correct. And, and, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would hope that at the conclusion of this process, perhaps at the beginning of next year, we could have a discussion very early on about the process for the following, for, for 2019. I think it was Alderman Rainey who'd asked about priority-based budgeting, and we provided a document in the, in the budget memos for an exercise we did about five years ago. And I would encourage the council to think about that, because part of a priority-based budgeting discussion for 19 could be to identify additional general fund dollars to put toward capital. And so as, as Mr. Lyons indicated, we've, is it $400,000 a year, Marty, that we're doing now, that we previously had not been doing for the general fund for capital? Order of magnitude?
It's around there. That's the, that's what we had, we did, we had to cut it out for 18 and pay as you go. We've supplemented it with the debt service payment, that transfer I referred to before, but that was a 2013 memo that the previous council looked at at the start of, where we talked about going up $400,000 a year, transferring operating revenues into capital, because that would allow you quite a bit of dollars. By now, we'd be up $2.5 million in operating revenues in capital. And you, this is not something unique to Evanston. You'll have many communities that have part of their income tax, part of their utility tax, or part of a local gas tax designated to the capital improvements fund. It never goes to the general fund. 20% of it just goes straight into the capital fund, and that helps keep your debt down.
And so, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would hope that we could begin those discussions early next year as we look at 19. But my sense, Mr. Mayor, is that we would not move forward with these adjustments, that we would go with the capital budget as proposed, with the additional Crown spending, with the additional library spending, and prepare budget ordinances that reflect that. And if there's nothing else, then we will, I believe we have general direction then on the, the budget for 2018. We will prepare the appropriate ordinances for next week. We will have a single item dealing with victim services with the direction we received this evening. With these ordinances, then also, that are before you this evening, plus the levies that were before you about a month ago, that will allow you, I think, to take all the action you need next week to adopt the 2018 budget.
Yeah, we all have one budget resolution with, we will fill in as we can, and if there's any amendment on the floor, we can change the one general fund item for victim advocates.
That's correct, and that would be a very simple, very simple thing.
Yeah, very simple. And then, as you pointed out, we'll have all the fee changes that have been discussed.
Yes. So then, Mr. Mayor, I think that concludes the discussion on SP2.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all right. That was a good, lengthy but important conversation on SP2. SP3 is the third quarter financial report for fiscal year 2017. That was in everybody's packet. This is for action to accept and place on file. Is there a...
Move approval.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor, maybe we could just let Mr. Lyons spend 30 seconds.
30 seconds.
Without the aid of a PowerPoint, to just talk about where we believe we're going to be ending the year. As you know, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have made several changes to the current year budget in order to be balanced. And so, Mr. Lyons, maybe you could just say, what is our latest thinking as to what December 31 looks like?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We are still behind where we would be in normal third quarter, and that's just because of what we had for the building permits. Our property taxes, everything else is in exactly where we thought. And with what we told the council in July, we're right on track to where we think we need to be. We're at $130,000 surplus at the end of the third quarter. We'd like to be at a bigger surplus, but at the same time, we have all of the controls in place. I was looking at the bills lists. The general fund bills lists are lower than they were last year for the last four bills lists. A few hundred thousand dollars, not a million dollars, but we're, so that tells you that we're actually holding the line on incidental expenses in the general fund and then holding the line on OT. The short of it is, is we've calculated out to the end of the year, and we think that we can enter, can end the year at balance. And that will mean that both revenues and expenses will be way under budget on an order of magnitude of $4 to $5 million, but that will be, on the revenue side, you know that's from the building permits, and on the expense side, that's from eliminating a lot of those transfers that we had, $1,007,000 for building permits transferred to the capital fund. But then also all those expense reductions, and finally, a couple of revenue transfers in. We had contemplated transferring funds in from the parking fund, $500,000 from that as a means of balancing. So the short of it is, we have a plan to end the year balanced, and we won't take every action that we've outlined if we don't need to. If, as I said, December 31st, we're balanced without a transfer from the parking fund, we won't make it. But the idea is to end the year in balance so that all the hard work for '18 makes a difference. And I'm sorry, that was three minutes.
That's okay. It was a good three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, we had a motion that was seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Nine to, I don't know, I guess I'm missing a couple of people here. Eight to nothing, this is accepted and placed on file, SP3. What I'd like to do on all the others, is we have a lot of ordinances on here. I'd like to treat this as we do the consent agenda, and I've asked Senior Alderman Rainey to go through each of these. And just like we do on the consent agenda, if you want to talk about one of these, then you'll request to have it pulled off, and then we'll talk. Okay? Alderman Rainey, would you like to take us through these, starting with SP4?
All right, these are for introduction. This is ordinance 122017, which amends the City Code Title II, Chapter III, standardizing home rule taxes for due dates, deductions provided, and late fees assessed. This is for introduction. Ordinance 116017 amends the City Code 71217, increasing the meter charges and water rates. Ordinance 117017 amending City Code 7133, decreasing the sewer user rates. This is for introduction. Just so those of you listening, these two ordinances cancel each other out, so there's no increase in the water rate or the sewer rate. They cancel each other out. You won't notice any difference. SP7, ordinance 119017, amending the City Code 3-2, adding Section 3219, creating a transportation network provider tax. This adds 20 cents per ride on rides provided by transportation network providers. For introduction. Ordinance 123017, amending the City Code 101117, Schedule 17, parking violation penalties. This will increase the fine for an expired meter by $10 to $20.
Can we pull that one, please?
Yes. SP8 is pulled up the consent agenda. Ordinance 124017, amending City Code 101112, parking meter zones. This will change meters operating from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM to the operating hours of 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and increase the rate from 75 cents per hour to $1 per hour, for introduction. Ordinance 151017, amending City Code Section 3215, municipal parking tax, Schedule 2, tax imposed. This will increase the municipal parking tax from $35 to $50 per month for monthly parking permits and city-owned parking garages. This is for introduction. Ordinance 121017, amend City Code 324, hotel motel.
Would you remove that, please?
This is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by somebody. Ordinance 125017 amends ordinance 138014 regarding the City of Evanston permit fee schedule. The proposed fee increases will increase planning and zoning fees and building demolition Ordinance 149017, amend City Code 2816, fees, increasing historic preservation fees. These fees were last...
Would you take that off, please?
This is off the consent agenda, and I move introduction. Ordinance 15017, amending City Code Section 423, building contractor. The proposal is to require any person engaged in the business of a building contractor within the city to annually register for a fee. Ordinance 137017...
Can you remove that one, please?
Yes. This is off the consent agenda, and we'll address it later. Ordinance 127017, amends the City Code Parking Violation Penalties. Parking violation penalties will increase the fine for street sweeping violations by $5 to $40 effective January 2018. Appointments for reappointment to MWEBE Development Committee, Jessica Oldani, Preservation Commission, Elliot Dudnick, Julie Hacker, Timothy Schmidt. Mr. Mayor, I move approval.
Second.
Okay. City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Sufferton?
Yes.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just...
Okay.
The ones off.
Yeah, I mark the ones off, and I mark the people that pulled them off.
So ordinance 123017, amending the City Code Schedule 15, 17, parking violation penalties. The fine will be increased by $10 to $20. I move introduction.
Okay, Alderman Sufferton?
Sure. I was just hoping we could talk, Director Vean, maybe about the uses that the parking app would have for this and ways that, nobody's happy about an increase in parking fines, but the way to defeat it is to not have an expired meter. And are we going to, as we roll the app out and get more people to use it, do you think there'll be ways for people to avoid expired meters more easily?
Mayor Hagerty, Clerk Reed, Alderman, City Manager Bob Quitz, Jill Vean, Parking Division Manager. The, currently, we have a few different ways for people to be able to pay their, for parking meters. You can go ahead and put your coins in. You can use a credit card at a multi-space machine or a single-space machine. We also have an app. I believe what you're referring to, Alderman Sufferton, is we recently went to a private-label app that just was rolled out in the last week, Park Evanston. With this new, we did a soft rollout because there's other benefits that are going to come as phase two to the app in 2018 with the permits and paying for your citations and permits through the app. But for paying for your meters, we now will have the ability for a mobile wallet, similar to if anyone has used Park Chicago, where you load money onto the wallet. With that, we, the city does have the ability to offer incentives for the wallet to provide free additional money towards parking fees. That's something that you're referring to. There's different incentives that we could bring forward, and, you know, staff is working on different options as we move through the phases of the apps to provide that. We, there's also a feature for validations as well that we've always had, but we're looking to improve that with a new, with a new system to be able to offer discounts for parking. So there's two ways that we could offer incentives. Is that...
Yeah. Thank you. Alderman Wen?
Yes, Alderman Tufferton, because you're new here, you may not realize that, and I think because Director Vean is new also, we have had greater compliance in the last couple of years with our parking meters since we've offered credit cards and the parking app, significantly greater compliance. And so, we actually have diminishing revenue from parking meter fines than, because people frequently just pay for the maximum amount. And so, we're finding that people are using those more and more frequently. And I expect now with this new app that that will just continue. The other point I wanted to make is the $10 fine has been $10 for...
Since 1976.
Yes. Yeah. So before you were born?
Yeah.
Yes. So it's about time. I mean, we really, yeah, we need to do this.
Yes, you said you would.
You know, too often, I know, yes, it stings, and, you know, as Chair of Parking and Transportation, I hear about it all the time, but, you know, when we let a fine stay that low for that long, then moving it at all is always an issue, but I think it's about time.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, and just very briefly, I'm not going to support this. I think that when I had a small business on Davis Street, the one complaint I heard over and over and over again, more than any other, were from people who ran out of my store or from a restaurant and found their parking meter was expired and had a ticket. And, you know, the complaints of I'm never coming back to Evanston, I think were a little bit overstated, but it does really engender a frustration and anger in the people who we want to be shopping here that I think is to be avoided if we can. I would rather raise fines on moving violations or safety concerns than expired parking meters because I think ultimately that comes back to bite us in ways that is not productive.
Thank you. Alderman Fleming?
I just have a quick question, and I think this, for me and for other people, brings up the Chicago red light camera a little bit in the sense of, well, just because people feel like if we're raising fees or raising tickets, then our parking enforcement is going to be out, like on double time, giving tickets to generate revenue. So is there a way that somewhere next year, you can bring in, you know, say the tickets we wrote in January of 2018 with the new fee versus the number we did in 2017, just to calm the fears that our parking enforcement people are not, you know, working overtime to ticket people? Because I don't have a problem with the increase. I think it probably is long overdue, but I think what might be communicated, or people might believe, is that we're going to be given more tickets just to make money.
Yeah, we can look at the data and bring that back to the council.
Thank you.
Along those lines, so are we adding ticket enforcement people next year in 2018, and have we added additional money for overtime to do such a thing?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so seeing no more lights, could you take the role, City Clerk?
Alderman Sufferton?
Yes.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Yes.
All right, so SP8 passes for introduction, eight to one. Okay, Alderman Rainey, could you take a step?
SP11, ordinance 121017, amending the City Code Section 324, hotel motel tax to include vacation rental units within the purview of the tax. It will add a levy of 7.5% tax on the gross rental receipts from the leasing or lending of vacation rental units. For introduction.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, well, this is another one that I'm not in support of. Again, for the reasons I stated before, I just do not see that it's fair for us to be taxing a mob and pop Airbnb rental unit and not be taxing our commercial, two commercial Bs and Bs at $325 per room per night if the Bs were to produce at 7.5% for us yearly, that would be almost $90,000. I mean, I think that's, it's really hard to ignore that when we're asking everyone else to pay in. I may have done the numbers wrong very quickly when I was here, but I don't, I don't think so. So I'll be voting against it.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I thought we determined the take would be $10,000.
It's based on per night. It's based on...
But there, you got to determine the occupancy, and they figured 65% full occupancy.
That's not what I'm coming up with.
Okay, well, we don't, we don't know.
Someone could figure that out better than I can.
There is more or less science to it, I think.
Okay. So, all right, there's been a motion that was seconded. City Clerk, could you take the role on this, please?
Alderman Sufferton?
Yes.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Yes.
All right, SP11 for introduction passes six to three. Alderman Rainey?
This is ordinance 149017, it's SP13, amending the City Code Section 2816, fees, increasing historic preservation fees, and these fees were last updated in 2008 and would bring fees in line with similar zoning review fees. I have no idea what they are, but this is for introduction. I move approval.
Second.
Okay. Alderman Fisk?
Okay, I'm going to be the lone, the lone no vote on this, I think, but this is, this is an instance where we have, we have several historic districts in Evanston that recognize the architectural quality of the, of the buildings, almost all of which are in our residential As part of that, we require the homeowners, when they're making any changes to their buildings, to appear before the Historic Preservation Commission or, at the very least, city staff for approval for their projects. In many instances, they choose to make, after conversation with staff or the committee, they make changes that end up costing them more. And they make these changes that cost them more in order to preserve the architectural integrity of their, in many cases, of their houses. I just don't see that adding more expense on top of that to these folks in historic districts or in landmark houses, that we should be doing that, because they're already making a huge contribution to us. And so I think that's, I think that's unfair and unwise for us to do.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Fisk. Seeing no more lights for discussion, City Clerk, could you take the role on this, please?
And so I think that's, I think that's unfair and unwise for us to do.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Fisk. Seeing, seeing no more lights for discussion, City Clerk, could you take the roll on this, please?
Alderman Sufferton?
Yes.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Yes.
Okay, SP 13 passes for introduction, seven to two. Alderman Rainey?
SP 15, ordinance 137017, amending city code, section 25, 525, license fees. This is to decrease the flat fee to $150 and increase the roomer fee to $28. This is for introduction.
Is this? What is this?
Second.
Okay. All, all... Explanation of what, summary of what this is? Yeah.
I pulled it off.
Director Weller?
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, City Clerk Reed, Councilmember, City Manager Bob Quitz, Ivana Thomas Smith. What this is, is by ordinance, we're required to capture rooming fee for numbers of persons living in a rental unit. It's dictated by square footage. So the flat rate that you see in the memo is indicative of one person or 70,000 square feet for rental properties. And the second fee is for 50 square footage for, per occupant renting a unit and renting rental, rental property in Evanston. So this speaks to a $2 increase for the roomer fee per unit and a flat fee of the 150, which is a reduction of 166 for a larger unit, and it's rental property only.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite? Did you have, okay, Alderman Fisk?
How do we determine the number of renters?
By square footage. The zone, zoning laws require occupancy of non-related entities based on square footage.
Okay, so this in, in many instances may not have any relationship to the number of people living in an actual unit.
It's per one unit. So for the rooming units, it's only allowed one to two occupants in one unit, based on the square footage of the unit.
No, I, I-
Yeah, I'm sorry, am I answering your question?
No, you are, actually.
Oh, okay.
You're answering it really well.
Okay.
But it's just that we don't know, the, this doesn't translate into number of bodies. This translates into square footage of rental space available in Evanston.
Correct, but we're required to do annual rental unit inspections. And in some, in that inspection, we're verifying occupants as well.
And how, how do you do that?
Based on what we have from the landlord in terms of tenants that they're renting to, based on the lease, and really based on our subjective data of what we see.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Fleming?
Thank you. So I pulled this off, one, to get clarity as to what it is, but then also, my concern is that, well, one, this is an annual fee, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so the flat fee would be the fee that the landlord pays or the fee that the person living in the unit pays?
It's the landlord, correct? Landlord.
Okay, so they're paying that once a year, and then the roomer fee would have to do if someone is like doing the shared, what do they call it, open community, shared housing or...
Correct, but it's still based on the unit.
Right, but if someone is renting a room in someone's house, then they pay the $28 roomer fee.
Is that correct?
Good evening, Johanna Leonard, Community Development Director. The rooming fee applies when there's three or more unrelated. So if it's just, if open communities in that instance, if there's a homeowner that has opened their home to one other person, then that would not apply.
But the, but that landlord would pay the 150?
No, no, I don't think so because this is, this is addressing rooming houses.
Okay, so if, if someone through open-
Licensed rooming houses.
Licensed rooming houses.
Licensed, and the people who use the open communities model, I'm assuming, are licensed, maybe or maybe not?
Well, it's, it's a different, so if you have the, the three unrelated issue, which we've talked about, that's where this, this ordinance would, and these fees would kick in versus if you, if you just open your home to one other person, you're not, that's not triggering that rooming house-
Okay.
-level, level of, of service.
All right, so, so I'm not gonna support this. I think my concern is that as we look at the whole affordable housing, and we spoke about this, about getting rid of our brothel law and so on and so forth, that there are people, I don't know the, the number of the rooms, but there are people I know and, you know, older people who are renting rooms to stay in their homes. And I don't, I don't wanna incur another fee for those people because they're already doing all they can to stay in their home. I understand that we have this ordinance that I didn't know we had, or we have a code, and so hopefully they're paying whatever they're supposed to, but I won't support this.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Seeing no more lights, City Clerk, could you take the roll on SP 15?
This is for introduction.
This is for introduction.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
SP 15 passes for introduction, eight to one. We are now at call of the, call of the wards.
No appointments.
Excuse me. Appointments, we, we did appointments in the consent agenda. Thank you, Alderman Rainey, for including that. So call of the wards. I think tonight we started with Alderman Sufferton.
Just like to remind everybody about the new stop sign on Harrison et Marcy.
Excellent, thank you. Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna make a reference, not sure who to make it to. We've had some discussion lately about the issue of public benefits having to do with developers. And it has come to my attention that the public benefits have been decided on in a case by the Supreme Court, and that public benefits can only be addressed by virtue of the effect it has or the enhancement it has on the building in question. And that's exactly what I don't want it to have. So in a discussion with the city manager, it seems that we could have more control over quote-unquote "public benefits" if instead of public benefits, we move to the concept of impact fees, where we could, we could charge impact fees and we could mold it and call it something else if you don't like that, that phrase. And we could charge impact fees that equal whatever we're now calling public benefit fees and have them do things all over town, like do it to a tree fund or a school fund or a public art fund, and not have it associated with a specific building. So I wanna make a reference to planning and development or administration public works. I wanna make a reference to one of those two. So what do you think? P and D, okay, there. Also, I went to the National League of Cities this past week, and I heard a wonderful discussion from a person from Denver City Council on the matter of Airbnbs. And in Denver, they're very supportive of Airbnbs in private homes, in two flats, in any place where the homeowner either usually lives and rents out his home when they're on vacation or rents out part of their house, like we've seen come here. But the fellow who came here from Alderman Simmons Ward a couple of weeks ago, who lives in Reno, lives the life in Reno and rents out this place and having a hard time renting it out, and the reason he's having a hard time renting it out is because he's obviously charging too much rent, so he's renting it out as an Airbnb, they disallow any investment property to be rented out as an Airbnb because it detracts from any possible affordable housing. And I think that's absolutely right. And so I wanna make a referral to, I believe that would be administration public works, I think, or even the Rules Committee to talk this out. They, they have had discussions about allowing investment properties to be Airbnbs if the minimum timeframe is 30 days. But for two weeks, one week, three days, no investment properties where the owner of the property does not live on site may be an Airbnb, may be licensed as an Airbnb because they feel that it detracts and diminishes the possibility of affordable housing. So those are my two references.
Great, thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming?
Yes, one is that I, I think the, the Ridgefield Park District is going to open up their fieldhouse in Cayman Park West for some very low-cost after-school drop-in center for middle schoolers in South Evanston, so that's very exciting. They will be approving that on December 12th. However, in their preliminary meeting, which Bob Dornick attended, he said that all of their commissioners did support that. They're just now working over the financing, so I wanted to thank Ridgefield in advance because I know they're going to support that and we're gonna open that up in January, ideally for some middle schoolers. The other thing is on December the first, from 6 to 8 over at Grace Lutheran Church, myself and the Ninth Ward Advisory Committee is going to host a holiday party and a coat drive. And so welcoming all Ninth Ward residents to come over, bring some holiday desserts to share, bring your family, and also bring a gently-used coat that we are gonna distribute to a student in one of our schools, oak-dinned dolls or chewed. So flyers will be coming out and email as well.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First ward meeting coming up Tuesday, December 5th, at the library, 7 to 9. We're gonna talk about development as always and have some presentations from staff, so I hope you all can join us. I wanna be sure to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, really looking forward to that. I, I wanna comment back on something that Alderman Rainey said because I've, I've been thinking about this in, in terms of, of public benefits and not so much impact fees, but public benefits. I, I think what we're doing is actually right. I think, I think making sure that public benefits are associated with, not only with the development, but the area immediately surrounding the development is really important. And I feel that way because this, and I'm not saying this would happen in Evanston, but we've seen it certainly over the years with our neighbor to the south. And I'm sure it occurs in other communities where you have developers coming in, they're trying to figure out what, where their votes are on a city council. And they say, "What can I do for you? What, what does your ward need?" And I would hate for us to go there ever. And I'm not saying that we would, and I'm not saying that everybody on this council wouldn't say, "Absolutely not." But I think it just, it opens, it opens up the thought to something that I think we just don't wanna go there. So I think we did it the right way. Whoever was responsible for writing the Plan Development Ordinance, I think we got it right and I hope we stick with it. And that's all.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just inviting all the residents that are in close proximity to the 1727 site. We're hosting a neighborhood meeting to discuss the new development there. It's gonna be Thursday, December 7th, in room G300 here at the Civic Center. I look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
No report.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Thank you. I'd like to invite the entire community to the Hanging of the Greens. It'll be on December 1st at Ebenezer Church. Dinner is at 5:00 and the program is at 6:00 PM. And I don't know if you mentioned the mayor's giveaway. Okay, also, the entire community, if you could please join us at Fleetwood Jordan on December 15th. The mayor will host the annual holiday giveaway. All are welcome. I don't know the exact time or...
Yeah, it, it starts early. We, it runs pretty much from 7:00 AM, I think, in the morning, and then it goes late into the day, five or six, five or six o'clock. And Alderman Ruth Simmons is referring to the longstanding, it just didn't start with me, mayor's toy drive that we, that we do every December. That's a wonderful event for families that come in and, and can receive a toy or other things for their, for their children. So we encourage participation among our businesses and other organizations and people in general here to help those that are less advantaged. So, thank you. All right, and, and with that, we actually are not gonna go into executive session. We're gonna bump what we were gonna talk about until, until January. It's a little early Thanksgiving gift to you all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.